Good evening, Mr. Donigan.
Chair Smith, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing very well. Thank you very much for asking.
Chair Smith, I believe we are waiting for one more of the commissioners to connect.
Loaded tonight, look at that.
There we are. Hi Dennis, Patrick, John, howdy.
Good evening.
Richard, howdy.
Hi, there we go. Hi, there we are, commissioners.
There we are.
Um, let me ask you a question, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Um, I've got a card up, it says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
I got the same thing, but you can hear me.
We can see, we can see John.
Ah, there I am.
There you are.
Okay. Hey Rebecca, you sound like you're real far away, could you speak again?
Um, is that any better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I will take off my face mask. I've been running around City Hall a lot.
Oh yeah, night and day.
Skylar's hand is up.
I mute yourself, Skylar.
Oh, I can't, now it's working.
There you are, there you are, um, in terms of audio, and there's your face, perfect.
Yes, hey Skylar.
Okay, um, Chair Smith, I believe you are good to go when you'd like.
Okay. Smiling faces one and all. Good evening, friends and neighbors. I would like to call our order, the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting on March 6th, 2023. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Oh.
Good.
Yeah, hang on, they lost me.
We see you Dennis.
Yeah, they, it came in as stop video, so I'm trying to click it back on.
You're, you're, whoop.
So, Alex, can you confirm that we're okay to continue or just see, or would it be better if the chair reopened the meeting?
Alright, you should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, please, uh, please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Chair, those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is opened. The speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute from each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. And Alex adds a slide up for us. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Peak?
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, may I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February 24th, 2023.
Chair Smith?
If that, we have the approval of the agenda. I'm very sorry, gentlemen.
I move we approve the agenda staff recommends.
Richard, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, if I may, Chair, um, one quick thing if I could say before we jump to the approval of the agenda. The past couple of workdays, I can't say about the weekend, but the last couple of business days, City Hall's been experiencing issues with its internet and it, it servers, I don't know the full details. But with tonight's meeting, we have staff that are watching the live feed on YouTube. And if we have an internet issue at City Hall, what most likely would happen, I was explained, uh, would be that our YouTube feed would drop off. So I have two staff members from our, uh, production group watching. And if that does happen, they'll notify us. And if you could please give us a, say a 10-minute recess so that I could have those guys get the live feed back up. Um, but the actual, if you will, participant feed, uh, the Zoom feed should not have any issues this evening. And the only other issue I'm aware of that may present itself is that the closed captioning on the live feed, uh, that may not be working this evening as well, but just wanted to give those, uh, quick updates before we get too far. And then, uh, staff is also recommending that, and correct me if I'm wrong here Rebecca, a request was filed for item 4A, that is the deviation request.
That's correct.
Uh, Heather Cliff Gas Station. The owner has requested an additional 30 days to work with his lighting engineer to submit a revised plan. Should the, uh, commission choose to, uh, acknowledge that request and grant a continuance to the April hearings. Uh, at this time, i- if that is granted, staff, then we will contact them, let them know that they get their 30 days as requested. However, at the end of that 30 days, if we do not have a plan submitted to the city, uh, they will be subject to, uh, a monetary citation. As a way to show that th- this needs to be, uh, this needs to come to a resolution, so that request did come this evening, thank you.
And, um, just for clarification, their request is for a continuance to April 3rd, 2023?
One, one final quick thing to add, oh, we are gonna have a recusal from one commissioner for item 4B. So I'm not sure if, if it's the commissions will put that towards the end, but that's up to you all, I just wanted that to, to be put out there.
Question? Richard, uh, if we continue 4A for 30 days, that means you have to do a whole new staff report and the whole banana. Uh, the only reason I'm asking is we've already heard this, we've already continued this once.
Several times.
And it's been past due for what, two and a half years, something like that? Can you comment on that?
No, you are, you are correct, uh, Vice Chair Mazza, that they had, this is their second request for a continuance, the date to comply has come and gone. Um, and I want to say that you are correct, that date was roughly about two years ago. I believe that, um, Rebecca, is that the applicant that I see raising their hand for this one?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And i- if, if the circumstances change, if they can come back with the revised plan, then yes, the staff report would be revised. Uh, if not, we would give you the, the report that you have before you.
And, uh, they have the right to appeal to, to City Council, correct?
Uh, yes, any decision by this body, uh, has the ability to be appealed to the City Council.
Okay, uh, should we hear from the applicant or is this? Not.
Well, thanks, I mean, I, I think we're kind of getting a little bit down the road, if, if tha- that request from staff is not, uh, persuasive, there, you know, i- it doesn't, you know, you guys can always open that item, hear from the applicant and then continue it at that point.
Okay, then I'm gonna keep my motion the same.
Okay, so with Commissioner Peak having to recuse himself, so there's a feeling to go in the order we are? Or do you guys wanna flop 5A and 4B?
I would appreciate it if you moved that item to the end of the meeting.
Well, um, I just wanna consider the fact that we're not gonna finish the meeting. So, that's basically a continuance. Because the, uh, prior item, the, uh, ADUs, no possible way we could do that tonight, finish it. And throw that in also.
I had a good attitude, Vice Chair, I had a good attitude.
It's a good attitude. You read it, you know how complicated it is.
I, I agree that it's a concern.
So that would mean that Skylar just have to do it again the next week. So I, I would prefer that we stay in order, uh, I'll listen to any, well, I don't have a second yet anyway.
Well, I'll second it for discussion.
Uh, Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, I'll offer an amendment that, that item, uh, 4A be continued, um, to, what was the date? Rebecca, April, April 3rd?
April 3rd, 2023.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we can vote on that, I'm not gonna accept it as an amendment, but if.
I haven't got, I haven't got a second yet.
I would, uh,
I would second the amendment and I'd also like to have the item on, uh, 4B pushed to the end of the meeting.
Just so we're clear, so we're at two out of three motions. The second motion from Commissioner Jennings was seconded, correct Commissioner Peak? And what I heard from you was a third motion to kick 4B to the end of the meeting, i.e. after 5B, correct?
Yes.
Got it, and so that is on the floor awaiting the second.
I'll make a fourth motion.
We cannot, it can only be three motions on the floor at one point.
I was gonna say, if maybe we could clear a couple first. Um, Chair, would you like me to call first of the motions?
Yeah, I guess we better start somewhere.
Um, so our first motion.
Rebecca, so, so Commissioner Peak's third motion fails for a lack of a second, and now we take the vote on Commissioner Jennings' amendment.
Okay.
To amend Commissioner Vice Chair Mazza's first motion.
Well, in that case, let me weigh in and have the make, just make the simple comment that I feel like these guys have had plenty of time, we've given them plenty of extensions, I feel like we have the information in front of us to make a decision on this. I feel like we could make the decision, and however it goes, uh, if somebody wants to peel it, we, you know, we're punching it up to the City Council, but why delay it any longer?
Well.
Commissioner Jennings?
Response is, if they're talking about talking to their lighting engineer, if they give up with an improved plan, uh, that will save everybody a lot of time and effort, and although it has been a couple of years, the station's been there for all of the 50 years I've lived here, and so, yeah, it may be a delay for a month, but in the scheme of things, it doesn't seem that great to me.
But wasn't that the same, that was the same exact reason they just gave for the 30 days we just gave them?
Well, let me make a comment there. The City Council amended the dark skies ordinance just for these five stations. And they had a whole meeting and had to amend the whole thing, at which time all the stations had time to speak up. And now, we're talking about changing that again, okay, so, uh, and the fact that we're dark skies, hasn't even, it's, no city waits two years to, uh, start, start the process, or put it that way, we need to start the process.
Okay, um.
Well, I can count to three, but I think you need to take the vote on my, my amendment.
Yes, that is, that is the, the, the first, the first motion to take, so this motion would be for Commissioner Jennings' amendment to the original motion, i.e. to continue item 4, well, 4A to the first April meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donigan, uh, let's have a roll call, uh, Rebecca, and see where we are.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So now the remaining motion is Vice Chair Mazza's as amended, we now must vote on that as well.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, abstain.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I, I should explain, I would like to make a motion, oh, Skylar, you're, you're talking but muted. Alright, well, I would just like to say, I, I feel like the ADU thing is so complex, and we're talking about accommodating Skylar maybe here. Uh, I, I would prefer to have a special meeting just on the ADU thing, so we can really be focused about it, because by the time we get to it here, we're just, or if we do it first, it's gonna go a long time, I know I have a lot of questions, I, I'm getting that sense from John. So is there any appetite to make a special meeting for it?
So, I look at this like you guys just looked at this lighting thing, we've had plenty of time to think about this and talk about it, and there is no time left. So, no, we need to, we need to do this tonight, and, um, it is very important, there's no doubt, Commissioner Hill, I, I agree with you a million percent on that, but, um, uh, we need to do this tonight, there, we, everybody's waited long enough, I actually, believe it or not, I've gotten a few questions and a couple of calls on it, so, um, uh, yep, we need to move forward.
Well, I just wanna comment that I have 11 pages of questions, I don't know how many Craig has. Okay, so, I can't stock talk that fast.
Just don't talk.
Oh, okay, let's pass the biggest, let's double it, and not even talk about it, that's a great one, why don't you make that motion, see how we vote on it?
So gentlemen, the, the, the agenda, the agenda has been approved, and I think we should, we should move on in the interest of time to item one there, Chair Smith.
So we're starting, we're at 4B.
No, 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 we, we have.
The consent calendar would be.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, not even that, uh, we have to cut the public comment, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The excitement builds. Uh, yes, public comment, so we have communications uh, from the public concerning matters, which are not on the agenda, but for which the Planning Commission has subject matter jurisdiction. The commission may act on these matters, it may not act on these matters, except to refer the matters to staff or schedule the matters for a future agenda. Rebecca?
No members of the public have signed up in advance to speak under public comment if you are present in the meeting and wish to speak for, on an item that is not agendized this evening, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen now. And seeing none.
You have Joe Drummond.
Do I? Okay, let me keep scrolling. Oh, and I, I mean, Ahmad, if you're intending to speak on something unrelated to your specific item, the raised hand is appropriate, otherwise, if you're only wanting to talk about scheduling for your item, if you could lower your hand?
There you go.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, give me a second to, uh, Joe?
Hey, can you hear me?
We can.
Just one moment and I'll get you a clock running.
Thanks.
Maybe a little more than a moment, sorry, uh, yeah. Okay, we are ready.
I'm, I'm actually, uh, here to talk about how I have been trying for two years to, um, get a, a permit that I didn't think I needed for a 64 square foot deck in my backyard, that, um, I think Patrick was trying to give me some answers, I, I've been waiting for you, Landa, to answer me for over two weeks now, and she hasn't given me an answer. I haven't gotten answers in two years, basically, because I ha- apparently under 106.3, work exempted, number 15 states, platforms, walks and driveways not more than 30 inches above grade, not over any basement or story below, in which you're not part of an accessible route, is supposed to be exempted from a regular permit, I know I'm supposed to do an administrative plan review now, I understand that, but I don't understand why I need, um, a, I don't know what kind of a permit, is it a CDP? I have not gotten a straight answer for a tiny deck that is not, like, less than two feet above grade, so, I know that in the deck, um, general definition, it says that it is, oh, it's such small, right, and I'm trying to read it here, a deck is an open porch or platform which projects more than two feet from the adjacent structure or freestanding and at least two feet in width. So if, if it is a platform that is exempt, I don't know why my deck isn't exempt from, I mean, it's just these small projects are, that, that are in planning and building and safety for two years is crazy when, when fire rebuilds that are 70% larger are going through in three or four months, that is infuriating to me. So thus, I just think something needs to be done, I, I, I know, I just, I want some answers, and I, I don't know, I mean, I've tried to ask the races to, to do something about variances as well, and, and, um, that are supposed to be put on any structure in, in a landslide area, I think that's a little crazy too, because if, if, uh, an addition over 10%, I understand, but, and like a shed or a deck or anything shouldn't have a variance. So anyway, I'd love some answers and get some, some progress on this deck, or, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Um, I'm trying to, I'm having a little bit of a challenge in viewing the meeting, I don't see any other raised hands. So I believe that is the only speaker this evening, if you'd like to continue?
Yes. Okay, um, our Planning Commission and staff comments and inquiries, um, I see two hands quickly, I believe, uh, Vice Chair Mazza was first.
Okay, um, just one small item, and that is, in reading the minutes, which will come up in a minute, uh, one of the items, which was last October, was Rob DeBoe uh, stated that swimming pools were impermeable structures, um, which doesn't seem to jive with the planning staff. And we never got a, a feedback on whether that's correct or not, but it does change everything we hear, and it's been five months. And then, so, wanna know where that stands, uh, the other thing is, I brought up several meetings ago, a couple times, the fact that as planning commissioners and with new planning commissioners, there's been zero training for quite a while. Uh, no, uh, Brown Act training, no planning commission training, no manuals, no seminars, no nothing, and I attended a Parks and Rec meeting where they were pushing all their, their, uh, commissioners to go on junkets and, and things like that, um, so, why did we drop this about four years ago, uh, and how is, and why don't we have manuals and so, some kind of training for planning commissioners? That's, those are my only questions.
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, good evening, everybody, um, I have several questions and observations, and I guess some of these are for Richard, and you you'll need to parse out what, what's actually a question maybe, but uh, first answering, responding to Joe, yeah, it seems to me that somehow in the city, it should be easier to do smaller things. Um, another example is somebody was trying to put up a three-foot-high non-retaining retaining wall, just some stacked blocks along the side of their driveway as a decorative thing, and they had a whole code compliance thing and had to do a, uh, a permit for that, and it should, it should be easy to do the simpler things, and maybe a little bit more difficult to do the gigantic houses with a dozen bathrooms. Um, so that the whole scale of how we emphasize permits could maybe be adjusted, just an observation. Pools are impermeable, um, and I think, I'd had some conversation with, with Richard about this many, many months ago, um, but I've observed that they do flood when we get, you know, the, the four inches of rain in a couple hours, they can, they can overflow beyond the coping. Um, meanwhile, I noticed yesterday the communications tower at Lost Hills is approximately the same height as the new one at the substation here, but it's made of view-permeable steel lattice, like wireframe, like the old one that used to be at the civic center. Um, and I, I noted this to city staff, and I know it's too soon to expect any def- definite sort of reply yet, but I just thought the public would be interested that the fact that it works for them out there tends to confirm that the beefed-up solid orange and white version we have here now, with the triangular platforms, isn't designed solely for public safety, but rather for the county to capitalize by renting space out to commercial wireless carriers. So if, if there were any thought that the Lost Hills Tower is grandfathered and the orange and white is the new required design, that doesn't seem likely because the radio coverage area would be comparable in terms of terrain and things like that. And in terms of helicopter safety, the Lost Hills Tower is about 150 feet from their helipad, whereas this new one is about 200 feet from the pad. So it doesn't seem like it's an FAA requirement, uh, because Lost Hills doesn't have it, so, um, next point, there was some talk in front of council last week about banning balloons like Laguna Beach, and I think that's probably a good idea. And just the thought that maybe Edison could be involved with any sort of educational campaign, at least with respect to the Mylar ones, because I know they can be conducive and cause electrical shorts, and Edison doesn't like them. So maybe you could get them on board and, and get some, uh, free education out of it. Um, meeting minutes, I, I don't necessarily need to open the item, but I just think as a general matter, it would be good if there was a characterization of the vote, uh, a line or two, like a headnote in a judicial opinion, that's like a little abstract, it's not a binding part of anything, but just to show what, if, if there was a dissent, what was the main point of it, and, and if sometimes the approval is along lines that don't necessarily go with staff, so it would be good to put, approved on what basis in that? And then finally, there, we heard there's some new FEMA maps out, that they've lowered the, um, nominal sea level now in some cases, so that makes it a little bit more helpful for some people. Um, but then this is a question, I think I understood that those maps do not take sea rise into consideration, but rather because they're updated every 10 years, the thought is that they'll just change as we go as needed, is that correct? And tho- those are my comments.
Yeah, great, thank you, um, Commissioner Jennings?
I don't really have any comments, I, I will, as Joe Drummond was talking, I was thinking back to my council colleague, John Harlow, who, when he was asked, do I need a permit to do thus and so, and John's staff response was, only if you ask. That's all I have.
Great, Commissioner Peak?
In the essence of time, no comment.
Um, the only thing I've got that, that it was in the city council meeting that really upset me was I had to listen to our, one of our city council members berate our planning director, um, and Trish Coffey, one of the finer engineers I've ever had an opportunity to be around or talk to, and, uh, especially when people don't know what they're talking about, it really looks bad, and, um, uh, the director handled himself, as he always does, with class, and unfortunately, that was to me a really bad outbreak, and what's really, really bad about it is, not two minutes before, council was talking about how do we keep people in the city? Well, you do that by not doing what one of our council members did. That's the way you keep people in the city, so, um, I'm sorry that happened, uh, Director Malika, um, but, uh, I, I, there's no reason for that, if somebody's got an issue, I know people can come to you directly and you can work it out in your office if that's what it takes, and, um, that's really the better way to do it, so, um, that's all I've got, so let's see, we're on to. um, that's all I've got. So let's see, we're on to.
Chair Smith, Chair Smith, I I'm sorry, what was the issue you were talking about? You you were a little, you glossed over it a little. What?
Well, it was it was Bayard, and um, they, the councilman was talking out of school. So it was it was bad, and and he uh went after Director Malika and went in it as a as a horrible way of doing things. And he didn't know what he was talking about, bottom line. So um, as it turns out, you know, it it got passed and you know, it's another fire victim. So that was, they've been through a lot, so they didn't need to be through anymore. So that's that's all. Um. Uh, Director Malika, uh, it's your turn on this. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, just to quickly hit up on some of the points that were brought up uh under Commissioner comments. Um, Commissioner Hill was correct. The FEMA uh the FEMA maps did come out. There was a presentation uh by the Public Works Director, and as part of that presentation, I believe that he can uh did state that yes, sea level rise was not part of what FEMA looked at in their flood maps. And in terms of the tower, uh, our staff member who's working on that, Tyler, is working on coordinating a meeting uh with the FAA so that we can kind of uh go right to the source to figure out and try to understand the issue of the color, uh, the markings, the the lights on it. Because yes, uh, as Commissioner Hill pointed out, it appears to be a very different situation at the sheriff's substation. So we we do uh want to follow up with the FAA, and that is something that uh Tyler's been working on getting us that meeting. And uh, let's see, uh, there was a question about pools, and I was trying to search for it in our general plan, but um I wanted to find the exact quote. But essentially, for the purposes of planning, pools are supposed to be permeable. But as Commissioner Hill pointed out, they have, they hold water. They 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 aren't permeable, or we'd have a problem. And that is that is exactly what the Public Works Director was getting at, is that uh the pools now, they're typically there. I forgot the term he used, if it was rim flow or just what, but you know, they're not, there's not that couple inches of freeboard like there used to be. And so uh, right now, we we do ask people to uh make sure they identify the pools as per as uh part of the impermeable calculation, so the public works can adequately make certain that the requirements for site drainage are addressed uh properly. I hope that I I hit, oh, there was the training one, sorry. Uh, part of the problem with training is that because of COVID, League of Cities did, they did not offer their conferences. Um, they are starting up with their conferences again, so we'll make certain to pass that information along to the commissioners. And then also, and Pat, I don't know if it's taken place yet, but I I thought our city attorney, our acting city attorney was putting together a Brown Act training uh for all the commission and the council members. Is that correct?
Yeah, that sounds familiar. I I'm not entirely sure on the exact specifics of that. I know our law firm, we have numerous videos. Should anyone want one, I can I can gladly send them. In fact, I I gave one about two weeks ago. So if you're tired of seeing my face, I could I can get a training with someone else.
And I'll make certain that staff forwards those training opportunities as they come available, but COVID uh did did put a damper on this. Uh, thank you very much. I think I hit all of them. I hope I did.
Hey, great. Um, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yeah, Richard, are you are you saying that Public Works looks at them as impermeable, but we do not consider them impermeable when we do the maximum permeable calculation?
So Public Works is looking at them as impermeable for their calculations, and I was trying to find the code section. Um, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to, but there is a code section that explains uh that pools are not count are are seen as permeable. And then I also found on the city's handouts that we have been publishing them, uh, publishing that pools are permeable. So it it it's not a moot issue. It's something we'll revisit because I would like us to be able to reconcile with public work so that it creates less confusion. And the big issue too is we want to make sure that uh, you know, one of the goals of the LIP is to 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 uh promote permeability. And so we want to make certain we're in line in line with that goal.
Okay, another question. Uh, why are we talking to the FAA instead of the S SMM UC? Uh, it's their permit, which they violated, made it too tall. Um, apparently we're giving them the certificate of occupancy with a violation. So isn't it their job to comply rather than the FAA's?
Uh, so the CFO comes from the state, not the city. Uh, the planning department has not signed off on their permits. And they are telling us that the FAA is requiring them to do it. So rather, I I we're going to be bringing uh conditional use permit forward for the use of that tower. Um, so at this point, staff is essentially fact-checking uh, because they are presenting information stating that it it has to be that way. And so we would like to to have a talk with the FAA and verify that what's being submitted to the city is actually correct. And also, um, you know, I'd like to make certain that the facts were presented properly to the FAA. Um, to make certain they're fully aware of the city's condition. I don't know if that was ever presented to them. And I don't know if they'll give any consideration of that, but I'd like to make certain they're aware of what was on the original approval.
Okay, uh, one last comment. I just want to comment on Chairman Smith's uh comment. Commissioner, uh, he's the only city council member that spent four years on the planning commission. He's the only one that knows what he's talking about. I just want to make that point.
Yeah, you did. Um, okay, we're good. Here we go. Uh, consent calendar. Previously discussed items.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Oh, yes, please.
I'd like to pull three B one.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hill?
I'd like to pull three B one.
I make a motion to approve pulling item three B one.
Yes, B two or three B one?
Three B one is Latigo, three B two is the minutes.
Okay, so my motion will be to approve three B two only. Unless somebody wants to pull the minutes.
I'll second it.
Hey, Rebecca, please.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Rebecca, you're fading, so you must put your mask back on.
I haven't, but I can be louder.
There you go.
Yeah, that's that's not a mask problem. That's a microphone or something else.
Okay, so we are gonna go to uh three B one. Okay, thank you. Um, extension of coastal development permit number sixteen dash zero zero five and coastal development permit amendment number two-two dash zero zero two, site plan review number sixteen dash zero zero six, variance number sixteen dash zero zero two, and miter modification number sixteen dash zero zero seven. Request to extend the planning commission's approval for construction of a new single-family residence detached garage, the wastewater treatment system and landscaping. Uh, well, it was an extension, so I don't think we have a report.
We actually, well, we do have a small report, if you would like, from the case planner.
For my purposes, we don't need one, but if somebody else needs to hear it.
Then the case planner may want to comment. I'm like, I'm gonna have a comment also.
All right, uh, Rebecca, we'll take the the case planner.
Um, so Alex, our case planner for the item is planning technician Turner. If you could uh make her visible.
There she is.
Hi, welcome. You're muted.
Muted.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Chair. Oh, thank you. Uh, good evening, Chair, uh, and members of the planning commission. The item we have for you tonight are the for our time extension previously approved for coastal development permit number sixteen dash zero zero five for the project at four eight one seven Latigo Canyon Road. Next slide. Oh.
Oh, slides up. He he didn't put the slides up because they don't feel like they need a formal presentation, so it's really just your comments.
Okay, um, uh, there's oh, okay. Um, so staff recommends that we approve uh uh the time extension.
So maybe I should jump in here.
Yeah.
Um, my concern is is that that, you know, the we need to provide due cause, and in their letter, they've only provided due cause till the end of the month, till when the 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 wet season ends, and they're they say they're ready to go. And they're just waiting for the the construction moratorium. So I know they're asking for as long as possible, but the due cause they provided is 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 only that, the rainy season moratorium. And they're saying otherwise, we're ready to go. So do we give them six months? You know, what 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 is, what's the 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 generous thing to do? Do we give them a year? They they're not, I don't know that we could give them two years based on the what they've stated as due cause.
Prior, Chair Smith, we we should take public comment before we get into deliberations.
Very good. Um.
And
Yeah.
The applicant for the item is uh Yoey Cheryl, and I believe he is present in the meeting.
He is.
Maybe he'd clarify.
He needs to unmute himself, and we'll listen to him. There we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Well, anyway, um, I was trying to turn my video on. Um, but maybe I'll need to.
The video won't be enabled, but you do have three minutes to speak on the item.
Um, well, thank you very much, uh, commissioners, for uh hearing our um request for an extension. Um, one of the issues that has um been um at the forefront of this request is that um we were not sure when the planning um coastal development permit for this project would be vested for the project, and um we were told that it would be vested upon the first significant um uh inspection of the site. And um, we received the permit somewhere around December twenty ninth. I don't exactly know what the date is, but that was the deadline, and we were able to with the uh generous help of the staff in the uh building, building and planning department to be able to get that um by that date. And we were told that we have three hundred and sixty-five days before the first um um but I'm forgetting the word, the first inspection could be done. So um, because the um CDP was, has expired on February sixth of twenty twenty-three, um, we were hoping to get the two-year extension, but I understand, you know, there's no rhyme or reason for that, except that we were told that we could apply for the two-year extension because we were under the five years. So that's what we're doing. But to get to um Mr. Hill's comments, there is no necessarily a reason for a two-year extension, but with a six-months extension, um, that would really not give us enough time to call for that first inspection. So um, maybe at the minimum, it would be great if we got um a one-year extension so that we could pretty much align the coastal development permit um the length of how long we could have the coastal development permit to align with the uh thirty three hundred and sixty-five days uh to call for the first inspection with the building permit. I think that's um, that's all I I have to say. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other members of the public present in the meeting who wish to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button at this time. And the only hands I'm seeing are our commissioners.
Yes, and I believe Vice Chair Mazza had his up first.
Okay, and my question is of Richard. Uh, I I have never heard that you can't have an inspection for the first three hundred and sixty-five days. I don't know where that came from, but when is the first time they could have an inspection if they started on April first?
Pre-job, the pre-job. Pre-job starts the permit.
The what?
It's called pre-job, Vice Chair. Everybody shows up, go to work.
Okay, that's my question. Uh, the architect stated he had to wait three hundred and sixty-five days. Uh, that we're talking about the time we need. When is the first time he could get an inspection?
Sure, the the three sixty-five, the three hundred and sixty-five days is how long the the permit is good for uh provided um, they don't get an inspection, I guess is the way to determine. You have three hundred and sixty-five days to start work and complete a an inspection showing there's a progress being made. Uh, if they complete or reach a milestone within, you know, as they get a permit, and as soon as they reach a milestone, however long that takes them, uh, they can then call for a permit. So they they are not bound uh to wait a year for an inspection. Uh, I think a better way to characterize it is that they once the permit's obtained, they have a year to call for an inspection and show that they've made uh actual progress on the project.
Would that include a grading inspection?
Uh, right, so the the this, the first thing that would happen, uh, as the chair stated, would be a uh a pre-construction site meeting, where inspectors would go and look at the site before, this would be from the building department, before anything happens. And then as they do their grading, um, there they would have to, there are per I I I guess we'd say the rough grading, the drainage, and then the final, each of those need an inspection. Uh, I hope I'm speaking right here, Chair, a planning guy, not the.
That's exactly how it goes.
Okay, so to to summarize it, it wouldn't be, if they started grading on April first or thereabouts, um, they could easily call for an inspection sometime within the first year. Is that a true statement?
Yes.
Okay, I would make a motion then that we approve a one-year extension instead of a two-year extension.
I'll second that.
Hey, Commissioner Jennings?
Yes, I I'm willing to support a one-year uh extension, and uh it it does seem to me that the these issues are unbelievably insignificant to the city uh or anybody else around. It's not like it costs us money to give out an extra day or a week of an extension, one year, two years. It's fine. Nobody's harmed by it one way or another. Give them their year and let them get on with it.
That's what I, that's what my motion is. I just really want to remind you, in the past, we've had some projects take over eighteen years.
And and we do have this due cause requirement that we at least need to, you know, nod to.
Sure, guys.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice, I'm sorry, Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, I have a question of the chairman, and that is that since we moved the one item to the last, and we probably, we have three sets of attorneys and et cetera sitting here waiting for that, at some point can we inform them that uh we probably won't make it? So we don't have uh expensive staff sitting here for four or five hours, then going home, doing nothing.
Um, I I I apologize, Chair. I'm a bit confused because my notes and and Richard and Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong. The next item I I believe is up is four B.
That is correct.
And so Vice Chair Mazza, wa- was that the 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 item that you were in reference to?
Yeah, I thought we were putting that last suspended, so uh Scott could go home.
No, but but my notes indicate that that.
I'd love to make a motion right now for us to do that, if you want to do that.
I don't know what I voted on then, because I thought that's what I voted on.
No. So Commissioner Peaks' third motion failed for lack of a second during that time. So it is the only continuance that during the approval of the, of the agenda was for a pursuant to Commissioner Jennings' motion. So the next item up is four B, as approved.
Okay. So this is where we're losing?
So, um, perhaps when we finish discussion on item four B, we could take a brief recess and call, um, Commissioner Peak to let him know to rejoin the meeting at the time that you designate.
That's, I, I don't care, I, my audio will be on, I'll just be in the other room, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Just stay in this hemisphere.
Yeah, correct. And then, and then Commissioner Peak, you, you, you should though turn off your, your video.
Deputies on. Okay.
Much longer.
Here we go, need my glasses for this. Item four B, coastal development permit number two zero dash six eight, site plan review number twenty-one dash zero zero nine, and demolition permit numbers two zero dash zero two eight. An application to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct new single-family residence, second unit and associated development. This is continued from the February twenty-first, twenty-three meeting. And we have a staff report with.
With senior planner Eaton.
Yeah, there he is, he's somewhere, there he is, senior pack Eaton, thank you. It's all yours, boss.
All righty, uh, thank you Chair Smith, members of the planning commission. Um, next item tonight is as described, it's a proposal to demolish the existing single-family resident, uh, and, and construct a new one. Next slide, please. The project is located on the eastern side of the Point Doom neighborhood. It's east of Zumeris Drive. Uh, further east of the parcel is Paradise Cove Mobile Home Park with Paradise Cove Beach to the southeast. The project, uh, the project is visible from the beach, but it is anticipated to blend in with the surrounding development and, uh, cause no significant impacts to public scenic resources. Next slide, please. The project proposes the following scope. Uh, it's a new six thousand two hundred and eighty-four square foot, two si- two-story, single-family residence and a nine hundred and eighty-six square foot basement with a five hundred and ten square foot attached two-car garage. There is also a four hundred and seventy-one square foot detached, uh, second unit and a four hundred and sixty-two, uh, square foot detached two-car garage. There's a permeable driveway proposed with a front yard fence and vehicular gate, uh, six-foot solid side yard walls, a new swimming pool spa with associated pool decking and equipment. Uh, there's an additional spa for the second unit. Uh, new landscaping, uh, total of fourteen thousand seventy-six square feet of new impermeable surfaces. There are open-air garden trellises, water features, retaining walls not to exceed six feet in height, and the new onsite wastewater treatment system. The, uh, applicant is also applying for a discretionary request to go over the allowed eight feet to twenty-four feet with a flat roof. Next slide, please. Uh, so here is the site plan that's overlaid on the color code slope analysis. Uh, chapter four of the LIP requires that all development within Point Doom avoid twenty-five percent slopes or four to one or steeper. Um, this project was designed to avoid all four to one slopes which are depicted in green here. The main residence includes, uh, basement and a pool with a raised deck, uh, which will not be more than twelve feet in height. Um, and then the second unit includes its own courtyard, detached garage and spa. Next slide, please. Um, the project proposes a site plan review for height over the allowed eighteen feet for up to twenty-four feet with a flat roof. Areas proposed over twenty, or over eighteen feet, excuse me, are depicted here in red. Uh, some other areas of concern, including the pool deck, trellises and upper level deck will be at or below eighteen feet in height. Next slide, please. The second unit and detached garage will not be taller than twelve feet. Next slide. Um, in June of tw- twenty twenty-two, staff received some concerns from the public about the site possibly requiring a view corridor that is subject to LIP chapter six. So, uh, this project was originally scheduled to be heard in July of twenty twenty-two, but staff needed to look into the concern a bit more, uh, that was brought up right before the hearing. The applicant was able to demonstrate that the site would not provide views of the ocean via a view corridor. Views of the ocean are visible through the site from Zumeris Drive, which is a public road, but only at an indirect angle when looking from the southwest corner, uh, to the, to the, um, northeast corner of the lot. The, uh, Paradise Cove Mobile Home Park with its associated development are at approximately the same grade as the subject site. So a continuous view corridor would not provide direct views of the ocean, and the applicant was not required to provide one. Next slide, please. So there were a couple additional concerns regarding, uh, private views, uh, with documented primary view determinations. Uh, the property, two houses to the north at six seven one six Zumeris Drive, sent in correspondence regarding their view concerns. As shown here, uh, it is possible that some of the development encroaches into the areas that are documented in that PVD, but the areas of the proposed pool deck will be at twelve feet in height at maximum. Uh, MMC section seventeen four oh point oh four oh A seventeen states that the primary view corridor shall exclude the first eighteen feet of proposed building height. Next slide. Uh, the direct neighbor, uh, to the north at six seven two eight Zumeris Drive also submitted correspondence regarding the view impacts. Uh, staff went and documented a PVD in December of twenty twenty-two at the site. As shown here, there are some areas of the proposed development that are within the PVD. However, all areas that block blue water views are at or below eighteen feet in height. Next slide. So we also received multiple concerns from multiple neighbors, uh, regarding a potential stream at the toe of the slope at the east of the property. Um, LIP section four point six point one A provides that a one-hundred-foot buffer be established between the outer edge of the repairing habitat and the proposed development. However, in the Point Doom area, new development shall be designed to avoid, uh, to avoid encroachment uh, onto twenty-five percent slopes and steeper. Um, as stated previously, this project avoids twenty-five percent slopes, uh, which meets the ESHA requirements of the LIP. Next slide. So lastly, um, staff recommends adoption of resolution twenty-three eleven, uh, approving the project as condition, and we are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um. Anybody go on the side, ex parte, anybody go out and talk with anybody, I'm sure everybody did. Uh, Commissioner Jennings?
I had a meeting with, uh, Don Schmitz, uh, on last Friday. I visited the site, looked at the, at the, uh, story poles and so forth. Uh, but, uh, nothing that wasn't in the context of the staff report. Uh, I also was there once before, whenever this matter came up the last time, I also visited the site then, uh, but I I can't remember when that was, I guess it's whenever it came up before.
Okay, uh.
That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Uh, yeah, I visited the site, um, the week before the meeting that was scheduled two weeks ago, so, uh, two and a half weeks ago. Um, met there with, uh, Jamie Harnish, who is representing several neighbors, I believe, at least one neighbor. Um, uh, John was there, John Mazza was there too. Uh, then we also met with Don Schmitz. Uh, before Don arrived, um, John has a, a tool that, that very objectively measures the grade, and we determined that there are substantial areas greater than four to one immediately adjacent to the existing house in the site where the new house would be proposed. We can talk about why that would be. Um, also saw that if vegetation were cleared, there would be a view corridor to a little bit of blue ocean uh, right along the south side of the property. We can talk more about view corridors. And I also asked staff for some kind of exhibit clarifying the definition of, uh, in the LIP of bluff edge where it talks about what happens when a coastal bluff wraps around into a canyon and how you define the end of that, where does the coastal bluff end? Uh, there's a whole methodology in the LIP, and I wanted to see that applied here to see we were in fact within a hundred feet of that.
Vice Chair?
Uh, yes, I I met with Craig and, and, uh, uh, Don and Jamie and that, all in one day, uh, same thing that he said. Also, I'm a resident of that street, I was, I've lived very close to that area for fifty years and on the street for thirty-five years. Uh, I was president for fifteen years of the street of the association. So I know pretty much everybody, I do not know the applicant. I knew the prior tenant, I've been in every house probably except one several times. So I do know the area, um, and I walked the beach at least five thousand times.
Okay, very good, um. I met with Mr. Schmitz, um, talked with, uh, Mr. Harnish, and, um, boy, there's just a lot going on here on this project, so let's, uh, get to it. I think, um, Mr. Schmitz probably has a fine program for us to look at.
Thank you, and, um, Alex, if you could load the Schmitz, uh, presentation? And then Don, you do have fifteen minutes in total, and we do have several speakers signed up to speak in opposition, if you'd like to reserve any of your time for rebuttal.
I'm shocked to hear that there's speakers in opposition, uh, but seeing as there are, then, uh, we'll, uh, we'll retain, uh, five or six minutes for rebuttal, so if you'll give me heads up, I got my stopwatch going, but, uh, hit me at nine minutes, please.
Thank you.
All right, starting the clock, uh, good evening, gentlemen, thank you for your time and attention. Next slide, please. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, IBM Properties. The project before you today is essentially a clean sheets project. Despite all the mudslinging, it is concisely consistent with municipal code and the LCP. The only discretionary action in front of you today is a site plan review for the portions of the home over eighteen feet. Next slide. It is not located in or near any, uh, local coastal program map ESHA, it just isn't. Next slide. The property is highly disturbed and developed, uh, with non-native landscaping. Next slide, as you can see and as you know, because you have been out there. There's simply no habitat value on the property. Next slide, please. The majority of the properties is flatter than four to one. I, I do know that a toy was brought out there, uh, but it doesn't take into account the fact of the, uh, separation for the contour lines to actually come up with consistent on the code on how you measure slopes. But there was a concern articulated during the site visit that the land and air survey may not be accurate. Next slide. So to assuage that concern, we went to another surveying firm, Peak Survey, very well-respected and experienced, had them also confirm that the proposed development will not encroach on any slopes steeper than four to one. Next slide, please. And the staff report properly reflects this, that all the proposed development will avoid, uh, the steeper slopes and is consistent with LIP chapter four. Next slide. We have overlapping fuel modification. There is no removal of native vegetation proposed from this project that is already not being cleared. That's hugely important. There is no loss of habitat resulting from this application in front of you today. Next slide. And the staff report again goes on correctly to state that the criteria is the four to one slopes in the local coastal program. We would ask that the city continue to abide by that code. Next slide. It does not qualify as a bluff, uh, as the Zicklin's representative, uh, broached, as Commissioner Hill approached. Uh, next slide, please. But we did do a, a complete analysis on this, this is complicated, but, uh, where the coastal bluff curves landward, it can become a canyon bluff, of course, which it does, but let's just show you the exhibits. Next slide. We have to take a five-hundred-foot tangent, and when it turns inland, it is no longer considered a coastal bluff. It gives the criteria for the hundred-foot setback for a coastal bluff. Next slide. Anybody who's asserting that it should be treated as a coastal bluff is just not looking at the code in the LCP. We drew the lines five hundred foot out, your staff concurs that the, uh, the geomorphic feature that we are facing is not a coastal bluff. It just isn't. Next slide, please. Uh, one of the neighbors, uh, architects said that we are pushing way further out into the canyon than the surrounding development. And now, this is not an LCP criteria, but I did find it interesting, and the proposal before you will be limited to the ninety-foot contour interval. Starting up at the top, you can see at six six seven four Zumeris, they're at the ninety-foot contour interval. Below that, they're eighty feet, they're ten feet further into the canyon. At six seven one six, that's the Zicklin's property, they're eighty-four feet, they're six feet deeper into the canyon. Next door, it's true, they're at ninety-six feet, and on the other side of us, they're ninety-two feet. We're pretty consistent with what you see in that neighborhood historically. Next slide, please. The LCP, uh, policy six point two states that the, uh, public access map, uh, shall have public beaches, and those are protected use, view sheds. Next slide, please. The beach down below is not a public beach, it is a private beach. In the case law, by the way, the coastal commission was admonished for trying to regulate development from the mean high tideline outward, and we have submitted, uh, that citation, uh, to the city, uh, for your records. Next slide. So the proposed project will not have adverse impacts on scenic or visual resources, and it does not require a view corridor. Let's address that one. Next slide. Uh, so this was based upon, uh, LIP section six point five E. It says, "Never been applied, uh, to, uh, roads except for those which parallel the sea." But we've looked at this with your staff, we did a deep dive. Next slide. And we provided a, uh, accurate contour map that showed that, in fact, when you're standing on Zumeris Road, that the, uh, Mobile Home Park would block any views of the oceans. Oh, and by the way, don't forget the fact that the applicant should a view corridor be, uh, required, which it is not in this case. Under LIP six point five point E point two, we get to choose which side that would be on. Next slide, please. So we did this analysis with the view corridor on the north side of the property showing the elevations. There is, in fact, you can see the ocean if you look across the property, but view corridors simply do not work that way. Next slide. So with the direction of the view corridor, there are just literally no ocean views. Next slide. What you will see, what you would see would be the Mobile Home Park directly cross from the canyon, this is on a correct angle, and you can see the netting from the, uh, story poles located in the foreground. No ocean view and no ocean view corridor is required. Next slide, please. The proposed project will not have adverse impacts on scenic or visual resources as reflected in the staff report. Next slide. The project does comply with the two-thirds rule, we are proposing a second story, but it's only about, uh, thirty percent of, uh, of, of the, uh, first floor as opposed to the two-thirds rule, which would allow us to go up to thirty-four or thirty-five hundred square foot. Next slide. This is entirely consistent, consistent with the neighborhood pattern. Furthermore, that second story is three hundred and sixty feet away from the street. Next slide. That means that there's not going to be any visual impacts or impacts to the neighborhood character from that second story. Next slide, please. Uh, of the twenty-nine properties within Zumeris, a little more than half of them have, uh, second stories. Next slide. And you can see in these pictures, uh, well, this is all the second story residences. Next slide. And you can see from all these pictures that the surrounding development, uh, especially on this side of the street. Next slide, almost all of them have second stories. Next slide. And next slide, please, including the Zicklin's house, uh, next slide, which, uh, has a second story. Uh, look, Jamie Harnish was the applicant's representative on this, and they have a full two-thirds ratio, second story, twenty-eight feet in height as opposed to the twenty-four foot height which we are proposing on a, on a very beautiful, by the way, large house. Next slide. And in the other direction, like here at six seven five four Zumeris, another second story. Clearly, the community character uh, entertains and enables second stories, and you can make those findings. Next slide. So private view protection. Next slide. Uh, someone once commented to me that, that, uh, there could be regulation on eighteen-foot or lower, uh, structures. Uh, it is just not true. Uh, it is specifically excluded in the municipal code. Anything eighteen-foot or less is not subject to limitations for the protections of primary views. Next slide. Now, at six seven zero six Zumeris, located some three houses, uh, to the north. Now, at six, seven, zero, six, Zumira's located some three houses uh, to the north. There's no visual impacts. Next slide. Immediately adjacent to us at six, seven, one, six, there's a minor impact. This is a slide from their official site plan review. Next slide. And you can see the corner of our Jacuzzi deck, which would uh, just come out from behind the foliage and the structure in the foreground. Next slide. That portion of the project that is greater than eighteen foot is the only thing that is regulated if it gets into an ocean view. Next slide, that's the municipal code section. So that portion is about thirteen and a half feet if you include the railing on the Jacuzzi deck. Next slide. And this is the cross section showing that, in fact, the heights which are shown in the exhibits are correct. Next slide. And at six, seven, two, eight, there's a primary view determination. Next slide. Uh, this portion of the, of the structure, which is over eighteen feet, however, does not get into blue water views. It is, it only impacts the sky view. Next slide, everything else below that is by right. We tried to design this house. As you can see, it's got that forty-five degree angle consistent with what the Zickland's uh, designed on their house. And we wanted to have the pool and the pool deck back behind the home so that there would not be impacts from noise and light. But we are accepting the special conditions uh, for umbrellas, et cetera. Next slide.
Six minutes remaining.
Uh, yeah, let's, let's close it up at uh, at uh, ten minutes. Next slide. So there are no impacts to the primary views. Next slide. Now, we have listened and we have made this one uh, modification and we think it's a pretty important concession. I'll get this out in the next thirty seconds. We submitted these plans to the city. We are eliminating the Jacuzzi, the Jacuzzi deck in the bedroom underneath it. To take that out of uh, the project design, that will eliminate uh, a certain amount of square footage from the project. Next slide, please. That'll be some three hundred and twenty square foot. Next slide, because I'm running out of time. Uh, this is the area in the far lower right hand side. This is what it would look like by the elimination of the Jacuzzi in the bedroom. Next slide. And that's what it will do for the Zickland's in regards to their primary view. It will completely eliminate any impacts to their view shed whatsoever. So I should probably stop there, retain five minutes for uh, my rebuttal.
Thank you. Um, at this time, if there are any members who have signed up to speak who intend to donate time, could you please click the raise hand button? Okay, I'm seeing. Uh, one hand up. Uh, could you unmute for Jade's? Gertik.
Hi.
Hi, and who would you like to donate your time to?
Ryan Levis.
Thank you. So one minute of time will be donated to Ryan Levis when he is called to speak. All right, and this time, uh, we would like to hear from Matt Hinks.
There's another hand up.
Oh, I see another one. Sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Jennings. Could I uh, unmute for Morgan Haley?
Hi, I'd like to give my time to Ryan Levis.
Okay. Thank you. So Ryan, you will have an additional two minutes for speaking. And at this time. Let me scroll back up. Actually, I think our first speaker is Eric Zickland. I'm just apologize for that. Eric Zickland, followed by Dottie Zickland. Followed by Matt Hinks.
Hi, can we donate uh? One of our times, Dottie's time. To. Mr. Levis.
Yes, uh, so if if you donate Dottie's time, she will not speak. The time will some, her time will simply be given up to give Ryan one more minute. Is that your intent?
Yes, yes, that's intention.
Okay, thank you. So then he has an additional three minutes. And Eric, did you wish to speak?
Sure, uh, everything I had prepared. Didn't include. Anything or the whole, the whole last section of Mr. Schmidt's presentation. So. I am on my heels. I will say. This process. Is improvable because. When we went through it. We were very collaborative with our neighbors. Along the way, and we changed a lot of things. We built a house in oh nine. Started in oh six or seven, but this has been a. Surprise and then a. Crisis and. It's been. An unpleasant experience to be a neighbor in the midst of it. And now I'm uncertain that anything I had to say before is relevant, given the. Presentation by Mr. Schmitz. I wish this had been a lot smoother. We don't. Like the way the polls surprised us and jumped into our living room view. And what was planned for them, but now things changed, so I'm kind of. Behind the times now with my. Speech. Uh, may I defer the rest of my time to Mr. Hallie? Hallie?
Uh, you are not able to defer time once you have been speaking, but. Okay. Our next speaker then will be Matt Hinks, followed by Scott Haley.
Hi, uh, yeah, this is uh, Matt Hinks. I am counsel for the applicant. Uh, I I actually didn't intend to sign up to speak. I just wanted to make sure uh, that the commission knew that I was here. I actually wrote a letter to the commission.
Okay, I'm sorry, I I didn't understand that you were here as part of the applicant team. In that case, um, we will. Just they're aware that you're in the meeting now in case they want to answer questions. If we could move on to Scott Haley.
Hello?
Hello.
Yeah, you know, I couldn't figure out how to, I'm, I'm an old guy, can't do the thing. I want to give my time to Ryan also, please.
Okay, so.
He already has three extra minutes, right?
Right, but.
They can take a maximum of five, isn't it?
Yes.
So now he has four extra minutes and he could speak for seven minutes. I'm sorry, I'm noting that. Uh, Cooper Cass. Is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Frank Angel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Cooper Cass. I'm an attorney at Angel Law along with Mr. Frank Angel. We represent Ms. Janet Friesen, who's home at six, seven, four, four Zumira's Drive is immediately adjacent to the subject property. Our letter to the planning commission is in the record and addresses several of the Malibu local coastal program. Inconsistent inconsistencies present in the planning department's staff report. Including its coastal bluff determination, its lack of a bluff edge calculation, its lack of a sufficient slope analysis. Its lack of a hillside development standards analysis and its scenic and visual resources determination. In addition to these deficiencies, I'd like to address the project's potential impact on the riparian habitat in the ravine that is part of and adjacent to the subject property. The riparian habitat in the ravine contains oak trees and an active flowing stream. However, the staff report disregards all Escher discussion by relying on L I P section four point six point one A. Which does away with the one hundred foot Escher buffer in regard to streams in the Point Dume area. In favor of a mandate to avoid development on slopes four to one or steeper. First of all, as our letter states, the staff report does not contain a sufficient slope analysis. And we object to the conclusion that this project proposes no development on slopes four to one or steeper. Second, L I P section four point six point one D calls for one hundred foot buffer from a bluff edge. And as our comment letter asserts, there's no analysis in the staff report as to why this apparent coastal canyon bluff is not actually a bluff. Third, the staff report only addresses the project's required fuel modification in relation to an alternative it quickly disposes of. L I P section four point six also contains restrictions on fuel modification extension into coastal coastal sage scrub Escha and chaparral Escha. The staff report summarily dismisses these restrictions by stating the very conclusion that, quote, the subject neighboring parcels are mostly devoid of native vegetation. And no Escher will be affected by the required fuel modification, unquote. Mostly suggests that there is some native vegetation, yet the staff report contains no further analysis. There is rich and valuable habitat in this ravine. In fact, when we visited, we saw what appeared to be a beautiful snowy egret scavenging in the wetland at the bottom of the stream. Suffice it to say, once a habitat is disrupted, there is no going back. And the staff report eagerly discarded of any Escher analysis. There needs to be a sufficient habitat assessment. I'd like to conclude with sequela. As our comment letter states, we disagree that the class three categorical extension for small projects applies to this project. The project's residence covers a whopping six thousand seven hundred and ninety-four square foot area on its own, dwarfing the adjacent properties listed in the staff report. Um, which residences respectively cover three thousand one hundred sixteen square feet, two thousand nine hundred eighty-one square feet, seven hundred sixty-six square feet. And two thousand three hundred sixty-five square feet. The six, seven, nine, four square foot number would make for a better address on the street than an appropriate residential living space. Also note, the project's swimming pool spans a whopping one thousand one hundred seventy square feet, larger than one of the adjacent residences. I see that I'm out of time. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank Angel, followed by Ryan Levis.
Mr. Angel.
I'm scrolling through, trying to see if, if you're present in the meeting under another identity, if you could click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
A new phone number just entered the way.
Can you hear me?
There he is.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so Frank Angel, also on behalf of our client Janet Friesen. Immediate neighbor of the project, um. At sixty-seven thirty-four, and we're object to the approval not of the redevelopment of the site. But of the project as site plant and as designed. When a new residential development, whether a true single family home or a spec house. Um, whatever it is, needs a C D P and a site plan approval importantly. Do in this case to, due to exceeding the eighteen foot height limit, it is no longer in the envelope. Um, I have to disagree with Mr. Schmitz that only the site plan is discretionary. A coastal development permit also is quintessentially discretionary. You can ask the coastal commission and you will hear it from them. Um, and I practiced thirty years before them, a coastal development permit and a site plan are both discretionary approvals. So importantly, therefore, this project is not in the envelope. It is not in the envelope. Uh, and so the approval action and the findings that you're making are discretionary. This means discretionary with you. And on appeal in this case, since the project is in the coastal commission's appeal area, discretionary with the coastal commission. And one discretionary finding required here is whether the project meets neighborhood character. As you know, one of the findings you must make is that the project does not adversely affect neighborhood character. Um, which this project, given its size, maxing out on total development square footage and the development site planning. Where you have developments such as the pool and the pool deck area creeping out over the edge of the bluff, the ravine or the slope, whatever you want to call it. At about elevation line, contour line one hundred and two, for those who have read the maps and the surveys, the slope starts. Whether it's a slope, a bluff or a ravine. Um, and it, it goes down there and that is not the case. Um, if you're looking up the ravine and it does create a domino effect uh, for the neighbors. We had that situation on Gray Fox and now we have it here again. The staff report makes that much clear. Just look at the homes surrounding the site. All have substantially less volumetric mass and all even further out the canyon. Uh, than the three closest to sixty-seven. Thirty-four parcels do not rob their neighbors of their ocean cues. Or in our case of their privacy by building ancillary structures like the pool and the pool deck. Uh, and maybe no more the fire pit into the canyon slope. This project is not in the envelope. The finding for neighborhood character cannot be made and. You need to only look at the data in the staff report, uh, for even the Zickland's house is less than four thousand square feet.
Thank you, you are, you are at time.
Thank you very much.
Um, and then the next speaker will be Ryan. If you give me just a moment, I'll add to your time. Okay, and Ryan Levis.
Good evening, esteemed members of the planning commission, Director Malika and all others in attendance. My name is Ryan Levis, a licensed California architect who has practiced in Malibu alongside others and with my own firm for the last fourteen plus years. I represent the owners of six, seven, two, eight, Zumira's Drive, the home that is to the immediate north of the subject C D P application. For six, seven, three, four. Our client's property is undeniably the most severely impacted by the proposed development, given that. The C word end of the proposed project cuts off as much as fifty percent of their current visually impressive scenic view of the Pacific Ocean. While we understand the Malibu municipal code section seventeen point forty point oh four oh A seventeen. And planning's interpretation of blockage of segments that are less than eighteen feet high. The proposed new residence massing blocks such a big percentage of our client's current visually impressive view of the Pacific Ocean. That we find the interpretation to be questionable and the view blockage egregious. At approximately four hundred and fifty feet from Zumira's Drive to the bluff side end of the proposed development. The six, seven, three, four Zumeras property is a very long lot and we feel it would not be a hardship to ask the applicant to shift their proposed development back. Further, the current string of homes on this east side of Zumira's Drive are sighted. And exhibit a neighborhood standard such that the eastern ends of the homes lie in a crescent shaped arc. Set back from the bluff that affords each home a view to the ocean. Analysis of this neighborhood standard shows that the proposed new development. At six, seven, three, four is extending roughly forty feet well beyond this historical line. We are of the opinion, the proposed news development should respect this current neighborhood standard. And feel it can be demonstrated that the project can be set back enough from its proposed location. So as to not severely impact our clients visually impressive view of the Pacific Ocean. While at the same time, not materially affecting their own enjoyment of the same visually impressive ocean view. If this project were allowed to proceed as designed, then all the homes on this side of the street, when they come up for redevelopment, will also seek to encroach further beyond this historical line. It should be noted, as has been discussed. That our client was never contacted ahead of time about the development by the applicant owner or any representative. We feel it would have been a neighborly gesture to have done this. And perhaps some of this resistance toward the project could have been avoided. Lastly, given that this area arguably exhibits the properties of an inland retreat of a coastal bluff. And has a perennial stream below that drains to the ocean, along with the presence of clusters of oak trees. We feel that respecting a proper environmental setback from the top of the bluff is warranted. Finally, our intentions are to be neighborly and our goal is to find a resolution to this matter. We have discussed this situation with the Zickland's and others. Our, our group specifically met with Richard and Tyler on February sixteenth at the city to try and see if a resolution could be achieved. Speaking on behalf of our client, we would like to offer a settlement of moving the bluff side into the project back. By thirty-five feet. And a question to Richard, if the applicant did agree to move that project by this amount, would they be able to maintain their place in line? When resubmitting to planning. Would that still be the case if all the neighbors asking for a denial would agree in advance to remove their objections if the house were moved by the amount noted? We thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Anybody else, Rebecca? I'm going to lose you, did we?
Sorry, uh, no, I'm just having trouble. I've got a little bit of a jerry rigged system this evening. I was having trouble getting over to click the unmute button. Our next speaker for the evening will be Janet Friesen. And whilst Janet is speaking, if there's anyone else present in the meeting who wishes to provide public comment on this item. Please click the raise hand button and we'll move to you following her. Otherwise, we will move back to Don Schmitz for rebuttal. Uh, so if you could unmute for Janet Friesen, please. And Janet, if you are present in the meeting and are under another identity, if you could click the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen.
Hi.
Uh, there you are. Okay, thank you.
Hi, um, yeah, I wanted to give my minutes to Frank Angel.
Um. Well, I believe. Um, well, I believe Frank has already.
Spoken.
Spoken, um, and I did ask at the beginning a public comment if anyone wanted to donate.
Okay, sorry, I must have missed that, I had to deal with something with my daughter, I apologize.
This is the commission's decision whether to accept another minute there, do we? Want to let Frank talk for a minute? I don't think, right? He, he obviously had more to say.
Discretion of the chair, yes, Chair Smith.
No, I don't think so. Go ahead.
Okay, and Janet, did you, if you don't wish to provide any comment at this time, um, I don't. See any other raised hands other than Commissioner Hill. Um, so then we would return to Don Schmitz with the applicant team and Don, you'll have. Five minutes on your clock, if you give me just a moment.
Before we start the clock, could we please go to slide fifty-three in my presentation? Okay, uh, fifty-three, there we go, uh, let's start the clock again, Don Schmitz on behalf of the applicant. This is the modification of the project whereupon we eliminated the three hundred and twenty square foot bedroom with the jacuzzi deck on top of it. So the project will be completely removed from the view shed of the Zicklin's property. Uh, I, I hope that's assuaging their concerns, uh, and just, uh, it's important, uh, to our clients. We, we tried to work with the neighbors, next slide please. Section seventeen point four oh point oh four oh is pretty specific. Anything over eighteen foot is regulated if it's going to get into that blue water view, under eighteen, it's not, next slide. So Ryan's testimony to you, he was basically making things up in regards to you ought to do this. And I think that we ought to have that, it's just really not fair, we have codes, we have regulations. And we ought to be sticking to those and after four years plus of working with the city and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars designing a project. Um, we have, uh, we think a right to rely upon the regulations that we have, next slide please. In a correspondence sent to you by Mister Jamie Harnish, he indicates that, um, this freezing's ocean views will be impacted from this project, next slide. Uh, next slide please, fifty-seven. That's pretty stunning, uh, to us when in fact, Freezing Residence is located between us and the sea and this application. Is located land where we're really stymied on understanding how Mister Harnish could indicate. That this, uh, this application will impact his clients' views, next slide. Uh, he also went on to say that the project doesn't protect habitat views as did several of the attorneys. Who, uh, again, were essentially making up codes and regulations and ignoring what the local coastal program says, next slide. The bottom line is that there's no new development down into that canyon from fuel modification. It is already fuel modified and setting aside the fact that the local coastal program specifically excludes Escher from the point deemed area. Specifically excludes it. The reality is that the LCP also excludes existing fuel modification areas as being treated as Escher. We're not going to be clearing any native habitat as a portion of this application beyond that, which is already cleared, next slide please. And the staff report appropriately, uh, addresses that in the findings, next slide please. The second story is what is discretionary and better than half of the homes in this street have a second story, next slide. We are consistent with the two thirds ratio, in fact, we're asking about half the size of the second story. Of what we are allowed under the code and it is so far back from the street, you will not see it, next slide please. Uh, we also received an email from Mister Scott Haley saying the truth and Scott's built a lot of houses in town. This project meets all the city requirements, at the end of the day. We've worked very hard for years to make sure that what we design and brought forward to you. Is consistent with the code and that is what the staff report says, next slide please. The property is highly developed and disturbed, next slide. Uh, the proposed development is decided on slopes farther than two, uh, than four to one and in fact, not one, but two licensed surveyors have documented that. Two licensed surveyors have documented that and your staff has checked and double checked it, next slide. The proposed residence is not visible from a public resource area, it's a private beach, next slide. No portion of development is located within a protected primary view, next slide please. No new fuel modification is proposed, next slide please. So it is consistent with the municipal code and I would like to close with this. Um, the assertion by, uh, Angel Law and I believe based upon the comments and the testimony that you receive. Also from Cooper Cass in regards to the sequel findings is just, it's just flat out wrong, please look at Mister Hanks. Uh, letter, uh, Berkeley Hillside Preservation versus the City of Berkeley is the case law on this. That was a ten thousand square foot house. Much bigger than what is in front of you, a house is a class of development under Sequa. Patrick, I hope will speak to you in regards to this and the appropriateness of the sequel findings that is in the staff report that is before you. That was published case law and single family home qualifies for that sequel exemption. So with that, I will conclude, I'm out of time and available for any questions that you may have, thank you.
Thank you, Don, and then I did also want to let the commission know that the city's geotechnical specialist Lauren Doyle is also. Available in the meeting to respond to your questions.
Hey, great, thank you, um, back to us, um. Well, Mister Hill's had his hand up for a long time, so I guess we'll go straight to him.
Yeah, thank you, um. We were shown very briefly a couple of seconds, uh, of a slide showing that the project has been substantially revised. With a section eliminated from it. The project as it stands now apparently is not the project we have in front of us. And we've heard from a neighbor saying he felt flat footed that he, he doesn't know how to respond to this. I didn't, I didn't see even a, uh. Mister Schmitz did show us a rendering of what the view would look like from the Zicklin's house now, but. I didn't see anything from Penn's house, which would also be affected. I don't know, I don't know what project we're looking at now, so on that basis, I would move for a continuance so we can actually evaluate the project as proposed.
Okay.
No second there?
I will second it.
I mean, yeah, I have all kinds of questions that may or may not be relevant to that, but it seemed like. One of the substantial issues that all the neighbors have brought up is. Can we pull this back from the ravine for any number of different rationales? And any of which may or may not be accurate or relevant. But we've now just heard that some big chunk has been pulled out and. I, I don't know how much that is really and how that might affect anybody's concerns or how much it affects them, so. I, I feel like we're in a vacuum now.
Mister Jennings.
Our job is to evaluate the project on the basis of the, uh. Rules of the LIP and the Malibu Municipal Code, I don't see that. I don't have any problem doing that.
They've changed the project.
Uh, yes, but I still don't have any problem doing it.
So, can I ask a question? You think you can look at a project that's not before us and approve it? Because the project that is before us is the staff report.
Amazing, you guys have short memories, we, we do this all the time.
Hey, can I just make one clarification point?
But this is a big, this is a big change, uh, in, right in the area of what is sort of most contentious about this, but how big, I'm not sure.
I, I get your point, I just don't agree.
Do you know Planner Eaton?
I was just gonna ask, um, Mister Schmitz is, uh. This was the plan that you sent to me that's attached to the staff report? Or, or is it not?
Through the chair, Planner Eaton, uh, we sent a supplemental revision, um. To you last week, uh, and that revision was for the elimination of the bedroom in the jacuzzi area. With no modifications to grading or anything else, it was simply an elimination of that component. On the north easterly side, which was, uh, um, most problematic, uh, for the neighbors, especially the Zicklin's. So that was, uh, that was sent to you last Friday and, um, that's where we find ourselves today.
Do you have an exhibit that shows what it looks like from the pens?
Uh, yes, I do, I can show you what that modification is, if you would, uh. Uh, like me to pull up that exhibit, let me do that. I would ask staff, uh, to pull up. Um, perhaps number fifty-five.
While they're doing that, can we have an explanation from staff why that was not forwarded to the commissioners?
Yeah, I don't recall getting that email, I can, I can check, um. It's, it's kind of important, if it was a change in the plan, um. So I don't, I don't recall getting that. Um, if it's different than the one attached to the staff report, then it, it is possible that it's different than what you have reviewed for tonight's meeting.
So, uh, the area that you're looking at here, um, I presume. The slide that says six, seven, two, eight, Zumira's and shows the eighteen foot limit is what's in front of you commissioners, yes?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so you see the wrought iron fence located above the text box. And then below the wrought iron fence, you can see the orange netting, I'm moving my cursor across the screen as if you could see it. It's, it's, it's psychological gentleman, uh, but you can see the orange netting that comes out from. The one story pole that says eighteen feet and comes across. So that's the area of the project, uh, that will almost in its entirety be eliminated from the story pole plan here.
But we still. Still have the, the ones on the more to the right that are eighteen feet and taller, right?
That is, that is correct, Commissioner Hill, what you're looking at here, uh, where the eighteen foot line is, um, is the, uh. Uh, these, uh, the main, the master bedroom is up above there and then the pool and everything would be located below that. And what might be, um, uh. Helpful is if we went to slide forty-two where I can show you the cross section.
Can we, uh, whoops. So is the pool deck eliminated? That.
Uh, I'll, I'll go back to Commissioner Maza to the, uh, site plan that shows you where the pool deck is, which would be slide forty-five. I just want to show you.
Yeah, what I'm asking is that.
Okay, this is good. This is good.
That line of below the railing that you said.
Right, right, right.
That gone?
Okay, so if you take a look at this here, you can see that we highlighted the pool deck in like a, a bright yellow. Which is, and then you can see that house silhouette in red, you see that? That's the taller story poles that you would see in, in, uh, from the Penn Residence. The yellow, uh, rectangle is the pool, that's not visible. Everything, uh, going on up, you can see the jacuzzi and you can see the black outline of the deck that went around the jacuzzi. All of that has been eliminated from the project, so there's no modifications to the grade or anything, but I just, I just took that out. Put the jacuzzi on the far side of the pool, eliminated that bedroom. So that everything you see on these yellow lines of sight here would be free and clear.
But the only thing you've eliminated is that one little square between the.
No, 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 that's a good, good question, but no, if you take, if you look a little bit more carefully, John. Uh, you can see the black line which is around it, I'm still moving my cursor around it, so you gotta try and feel. That's, that's all the deck and everything, the, the, the jacuzzi itself was smaller than the bedroom that was underneath it. So I eliminated all of that, um, and last one to, uh, show you is slide, uh, fifty. Uh, so that you can get a real good feel for it. And okay, so you see the area on the far right hand of the screen? The jacuzzi was over there, the bedroom was over there, that footprint came far out into that area. It was co-compliant, but that was what seemed to be most offensive, so we just, we just whacked that bedroom out of the project design. We took the jacuzzi off the top, we eliminated the deck, you can also see that in the foreground of the pool, there's no deck which goes over there. This ought to essentially address the privacy and noise concerns, uh, of the, uh, the neighbors. You can also see in this rendering that the deck for the pool itself is all back behind the pool, adjacent to the house. And the house is in between the neighbors and this elevation that you're looking at here.
Quick, quick question, that, that on the first floor of the house, there's a. Trellis or something that sticks out on the right hand side, it's.
Yeah.
Square, is that gone or is that still there?
Uh, I've got my cursor on it showing that I know what you're talking about and, uh, I think we are still showing that. But if that trellis is problematic for you commissioners, because it would be visible, uh, from the neighbors. Then, uh, we would be willing to eliminate that one corner.
Well, I'm trying to determine, uh. That square of white, that's that trellis is, is that where the building ends now or do you still have that round? Little box over in the corner and the stairway going up and, uh, whatever it is underneath the house?
Yeah, the building ends, we still have a stairwell which goes down to the lower level. Okay, but we took out all the building that was, was up there and, and that was bothering people.
Okay, so when they were objecting to the, the deck. That's still there.
No, 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 the deck has been, that deck used to wrap all the way around the bedroom and the jacuzzi. If you, if, uh, the staff will take you to slide forty-eight. Okay, this tells the tale, you can see, um, the stairs coming down, you see those? Uh, between the pool and the jacuzzi where it was before, that's what you could still see in the rendering. And you can see where I relocated the jacuzzi to the south of the property line, that entire green outline area. That was the jacuzzi, that on the roof, that was the deck around the jacuzzi that was, uh, alarming to the neighbors. And underneath that was the bedroom, uh, that we have just eliminated, I'm not trying to recapture that square footage anyplace else. It was a three hundred and twenty square foot bedroom, so everything you see in the green there is now gone.
Right down to the ground.
Uh, yes, if you take a look at the rendering, it's just a, we just left it as a patio area.
Okay, and now the jacuzzi on the other side, if you go back to that slide, um. That's what, that's what is looking into. Uh, one of the, I think it was Friesen's house, it showed it, uh, uh. A view of the living room that you could look right into.
No, um, I don't think there was any pictures, uh, shown, John, from the Friesen's house, this was an area that we always had as the pool. The only primary view, uh, uh, photographs that were, uh, given to you, both in my presentation. And by your staff were from the three properties, uh, to the north.
Okay, and, uh, do we know how many square feet the house is?
The house overall?
Well, now, now that you've eliminated that.
Yeah, we've got, you've got a house, uh, the original total house, uh, was, uh, seven thousand. Seven hundred and twenty-seven, uh, square feet and we have, uh, we have eliminated. Uh, uh, three hundred and twenty square feet of living area. So the house has been reduced down now to seven thousand four hundred and seven square feet.
Okay.
Okay, well, I, I have, I have real problems, you know, we're always told we're not supposed to be designing things on the fly. And that seems like that's exactly what we're being asked to do here, but for the fact that it happens to be the applicant's representatives. Who's pitching us the, uh, the new changes, so I'm not comfortable with that, but I, I, for the sake of argument, I would go ahead and, and try to answer some other questions here. Um, see how far we get.
Chair Hill, apologies, you, you made a motion and there was a second, are you revoking that?
Oh, no, I'm not revoking it, I'm just assuming that I'm probably not going to get three votes on it. She lets, let's call the question, call the question.
I will, I will assume that, we did have a motion in a second, I want to make sure that we do.
Call the question, please.
And Chair Smith, would you like me to call a question?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Chair Smith?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so Chair Smith, I don't know if I'm, if I still have the floor, I have a bunch of questions. Okay, so Chair Smith, I don't know if I'm, if I still have the floor. I have a bunch of questions. It's your call whether you want to hear mine or somebody else's first.
Um, well, you're the only one's got your hand up, so go ahead.
Okay, um, this is, this question for staff about the methodology for determining the, you know, interface between the coastal bluff and the canyon bluff. We did see an exhibit from them. The methodology, methodology requires minimum five hundred foot lines corresponding to the seaward face of the bluff and to the general trend of the canyon. And then you bisect those two lines. And so my question is, is there anything specified in that methodology, which does not appear in the L I P definition, that would indicate that those two lines have to, the bi- that the bisect happens, has to happen at the midpoint of the coastal bluff line. In other words, could the opponent, for example, say, well, if you slide that five hundred foot coastal bluff line over and put it underneath the Point Doom Mobile Home Park, that's a substantially different angle than what the applicant has shown. And therefore the bisecting line would come up substantially closer or even into, I don't know, the, the proposed project. Is this, so is there anything that says that that line along the bluff has to be right at its midpoint as he's drawn it? Or could you slide it all the way over almost to the end of the line?
Who are you asking?
That's for staff, whoever's most, most prepared to address the methodology.
Yeah.
Tyler, do we have Lauren available for that?
Yeah, we do.
Does Lauren know anything about lines or is she a geologist?
Well, she can, she can kind of explain some of our, 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 our basis, but, uh, to give you a full, um, the description, Commissioner, we didn't, our chair, we didn't, um, you know, we asked the applicant to provide that, uh, demonstration as they did. Um, you know, depending on how you cut it up, it, it probably could be within that five hundred foot, uh, line. I think that, um, I think that the, maybe what we're asking is, uh, does, is this well, quote unquote bluff, a coastal bluff, because that would make it subject to chapter ten and the setback requirements. Is that, uh, is that in line with what we're asking?
No, I want to focus on this, on this real tight question, because in my request to staff, I mentioned, it looks to me like you could, if you were, you know, being, um, tricky about it, but within the law, you could slide that line all over, all the way, from your perspective, all the way over under, um, the, the mobile home park along the coast there. And that would give you, you know, substantially different bisect line. And what I'm, I think what I'm hearing from you is that when you forwarded the request to the applicant, that you didn't necessarily mention what I said, that my, my question was how does, can you do that? Because I would have expected Mr. Schmitz to have taken the question and said, aha, yeah, even if you do it that way, see, still, it's, it's not a problem for us. But he didn't do it that way, so it still leaves open the question whether that creates a problem for them.
Okay, well, I'm sure they, you know, analyzed some of those different, um, those different analyses, and also we do have Lauren Doyle that can give a better opinion than I on, um, that, that definition.
I think it's less a question of geology than about precedent and in what, what the planning department has done in the past about how you interpret that, that, that corner between the canyon and the bluff. I mean, you've probably seen a lot.
May I just? Ye- yes, Lauren would be the one to speak to this. We, we work heavily with her and she's, has a large amount of experience with us on this.
Okay.
Can we get, uh, some idea of what, what decisions you've ever made on this particular definition?
May I just say, um, I, I'm not a geologist, I'm an engineer, so I do know quite a bit about lines and gradients. I'm a licensed civil engineer and geotactical engineer. Um, so I hope that satisfies, uh, Commissioner Mazza's question about that.
I'm just trying to get some precedent. If you can give us precedent on what you're saying, it would be important.
Well, I don't think there's needs to be precedent. I did go look, uh, it's Tyler and I sat down and spent about an hour reviewing this before the initial staff report was ever published with respect to the definition of the bluff lines. I think it's pretty clear if you go to the LA County GIS map, which is the one that, uh, Don Schmidt's used. You can, and then you add the ten-foot contour intervals. You can really see very clearly where the trend lines of the bluffs are. And then the bisecting line, I'm not sure I a hundred percent understand exactly the point that Commissioner Hill is trying to make. But whether you use the parallel line to the bluff face under the, the Point Doom Mobile Home Park, or whether you use it on the other side of the canyon, either way, the, the, the defining deflection point is really the trend of the canyon. Um, the canyon line that really makes the difference, not so much, I think, which bluff face you're using. The other point I would like to make is this is not a bluff, the slope, it's not a bluff under the definition of the L C P, L I P, or under, at, at any rate. So th- there you go, I don't know.
You, you're going on to a new point, which is valid, but
Okay, I will stop there then. I will stop there.
To clarify.
Did I answer your question?
No, to clarify.
Okay, then perhaps you can elucidate your, your question more care, more clearly.
Okay, yeah, first to your point, yes, the, the canyon line has a, has an impact and, and I don't know how much play there is in that or not. I, I don't know, but certainly the, when you have the two, when, when you have the the, the coastal bluff line, right now, I'm trying to do this in a way that you can see it from your perspective and my zoom is mirror image, so it's all really confusing for me, but so just
I'm pretty good with visuals.
Okay, but I'm, I'm, I'm doing like a double mirror thing, so I don't know if I can do it right, but, um, right now, the line they've drawn for the coastal is here, sort of closer to Point Doom, and then you've got the, the canyon line up there somewhere. And then, but if you pulled it back and put it under the Mobile Home Park, it would be at a different angle and it would, it would slide back to here. So in other words, there are a couple different ways it would lay along the coast. And so the question is, can you take that five hundred foot line and put it right at the edge of the canyon line? In which case you get a very different bisect angle than if you moved that coastal line and tilted it to a new coastal average.
Yeah, the lines along the bluff, the lines along the bluff on either side are pretty darn clear. And I'm looking at it right now.
They're, they're clear, but it's a, it's a, it's a cove, so they're, they're, they're very different.
No, no. Oh, oh, I see what you mean, okay. So you're talking about, right, but, but I think what you have to do is, is establish five hundred feet and what's the average for that five feet? So I think either way, regardless of how you cut it, I don't think, it doesn't impact, uh, it doesn't impact, um.
Well, the more you slide it over under the Mobile Home Park, the more the bisect line starts to draw up closer into the canyon. It's a more
Right, but it's not enough, it's not enough to make a, a difference if you're asking, is it within a hundred feet?
This is my question, this is my question, we haven't
No, it's not, because the, the lot next door, the lot next door between six, seven, three, four Zumiras and the next lot south of that, that lot is a hundred, about a hundred feet wide, based on the GIS measurement here. And then the bisect line is, is about, I would say, maybe another hundred feet coastward of that. If you're, if you're doing it the way that I think you're doing it. But at any rate, it's, you know, we're waving hands right here. I'm looking at the map, I'm, I'm drawing the lines the way you're drawing them. It's still two hundred feet, unless it were to come and touch the corner of the, the south, the southeast corner of the lot, south of, of the sub, of six, seven, three, four. That lot is a hundred feet wide, so it would have to touch that lot first to get within the hundred foot limit that you're speaking of. And I'm just, I'm just describing what I'm seeing on the map.
But can it, can it not do that? I, I mean, we haven't seen it draw.
No, no, it doesn't, it doesn't touch the hundred foot. It, it does not touch that lot, no, it does not.
All right, in the interest of moving on, for the record, we, we've raised an issue here. I don't know that we've definitively solved it, but it's, it's, we, we pulled it out into the light of day and if somebody wants to talk about it later on, they can.
Um, okay, thanks, I'll drop off.
Right, okay, thank you. Um,
Can I? Thing, hang on, just one thing, Vice Chair, please remember that our consultants that work for us, this is their life's work and they know what they're doing. So to come at them like that, to doubt that they're, what their issue is or what their, what their, um, uh, knowledge is, that's not a good thing. These people work hard, she's a very smart woman. Go ahead.
I have the requirement to determine the qualifications of whoever's speaking to me. Okay, I have had this particular consultant tell me things that turned out to be different than what they really were. So I'm always going to ask, what experience do you have? Okay, I'm always going to do that and nobody's going to stop me. Thanks.
Okay, we're all big kids here. Uh, we, uh, commissioners and staff, uh, so next question, on, on the slope, four to one. Um, clearly, this is a situation where the density of the contour lines makes a difference. Uh, because on the site, in the objective reality, we saw with the, with the tool, uh, I will, for the record, take exception to it being called a toy, that, uh, would show that, that it was greater than four to one in places. Now, we also have two professionals saying there is no four to one. Um, so, uh, the question for staff, and may, or maybe this is for Patrick actually, does the commission have discretion to choose, uh, which definition of slope, um, to respect here? Who, who decides which slope definition is, is the objective reality?
Saying so in terms of competing assertions of what the slope is?
That's, that's our, our decision to weigh what we think is most credible or, right?
Correct, yes, that, 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 that would be in the, the prerogative of the, of the commission.
Okay. Um, so, uh, for the record, I, we found greater than four to one slopes. And again, I'm, I, that's, that's contested. Next question, what does that mean that the beach is not public? They're trying to assert here. There's of course a public right of way down there on the beach from which this is visible with respect to uh, hillside development standards. That's where, how the, how it would be significant. But we, we have the applicant saying, well, that's not a public beach, so hillside development doesn't matter. Um, how, how is it not a public beach?
Who are you asking?
This is for staff and I don't know which one of you guys would like that better.
I think Richard can confirm, but I don't believe that there are any true private beaches in the city. So there, I think everything's a public beach. Is that right, Richard, or, or not?
I think the, the access to it, um, I, I, I think is, would make some areas, uh, hard to get to. But the wet, there, there might be some private beaches in front of homes, but for the most part, the, the wet sand is, is all public and uh, you know, th- this beach can be accessed by the public, uh, through, uh, Point Doom, provided uh, I think it's an admission fee and I have to pay even if you're a walk-in.
For Paradise Cove, you mean?
Paradise Cove, I'm sorry. There's private access is in Point Doom.
I can give you the coastal's answer to that. When I was president of that beach and we have a deed for the beach, we're unusual, we have twelve hundred and fifty feet of beach. We put up a sign saying permission to pass at the subject of the owner. Within a day, the Coastal Commission showed up with their lawyers, threatened to find us and said, it is a public beach, you cannot claim it's private, even though I had a deed. So they've already made that determination on that exact beach.
Okay, so I, I have a couple more questions and then, and then an observation or two before I would like to yield, so. And the question of the view corridor, again, it seems like we have a contested reality, because I was on site and I, citing down that property line, seemed quite clear to me that if the vegetation was removed, because, you know, you can sort of stand one way or the other and see, interpolate what you're looking at, that you would see a little bit of blue water. Nonetheless, question for staff, um, the, the staff report states that the L I P requires that a view corridor be a contiguous straight corridor running along one side of the property. I don't see anything in the L I P that says that, that says that it can't be diagonal. The only, the only thing that I see i- in terms of the, the definition that's relevant is that it's the linear frontage along the street that is specified. And that has to meet the, the, the specs. But we're looking at a project here that already proposes separate structures arrayed on the property diagonally. Is there nothing to say you couldn't, uh, shift the position so the diagonal was different and which would in effect create a diagonal view corridor that would, uh, admittedly be much wider and show much more ocean than whatever might be viewable down the line of the property? Is it, it, w- w- would a diagonal view quarter be a lea- legal option here? Given that they already have gone with a sort of diagonally split concept, if they just flipped that, could that work?
Yeah, Richard, if you want to add, I, I don't think that's ever been, been done before, right?
Wanted to make sure my microphone was on, I apologize, I'm bringing up the code section as we speak.
Okay.
Um, because the city's practice has always been, as well as I'm aware of, the Coastal Commission's practice, has been to uh, have it essentially run parallel
Yeah.
to a, a, a side property line. So yes, some of them have been like a parallelogram, parallelogram, because the the property line goes at an angle, but I don't believe they've ever, uh, deviated in my, because what's coming to mind is the practicality of it. But I am looking to see if it's identified as such in the code, so.
I can give you some examples. Um, we've had one spectacular case where, uh, Peter Morton decided to more, merge two lots and put his view corridor in the middle. And that resulted in a total change in the code system. Uh, there's several others on Carbon Beach, La, uh, Landsberg, the guy used to do the, uh, quiz shows. His view corridor is in the middle of his lot, not on his, on his property lines. Uh, there's three or four others on Carbon Beach, I imagine there's others than that. But those are, the, there's no question about Morton. Um, we did a settlement with him to allow, uh, so they can be down the middle. Diagonal, I don't know if you've ever done that, but we've done it down the middle.
Well, all I see in the code specified is the, the frontage, the linear frontage along the street has to be a certain width, just doesn't say what direction it has to run.
What, what's interesting here though, is this lot is so deep, I'm not sure really what you're after here. Um, are you going to pull up a chair and sit out there on Zumares and, and get the view? Is that what you're thinking you're going to do when you walk by? Because you can't see anything. Both of those are straight down the thing and it's a long ways away to see anything except for a trailer park.
I'm sure anybody who walks their dog by there every day would appreciate being able to see a bit of ocean.
Well, you can't though, so that's out.
You can't on Zumares, you're right now on that lot.
You absolutely can.
If you look diagonally, but that's not the rules. Go ahead.
Well, that's what I'm, that, that's what I'm asking. Is it within the rules? Because it sounds like, it sounds like it's a technical possibility, right? All right, so we, we've raised this issue.
Well, Sorry, I, I didn't mean to cut off any of the commissioners.
You know, if you, if you've got an answer, great.
Sure, what I do think is interesting though, is that i- it seems that they, they indicate side yards. For example, there is a, a section here, it says, on irregularly shaped lots, the planning manager shall determine which side yards shall constitute a view corridor. Now, yeah, it's not saying it has to be a side yard, but I find that it Yeah, it's not saying it has to be a side yard, but I find that it. They, 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 it's interesting they identify side yards. Morton actually is two separate lots, um, because. What he uses as a guest house technically is the size of a single, it's over eight hundred square feet, so they had to build that on a separate lot. So they had joined the two view corridors by putting them down the middle. Uh, I, I would say. That it seems like the intent is side yard, because that gets to be identified. Uh, this is definitely something that if the commission. Uh, has uh, the majority vote on it, staff could definitely look into it more, right, Pat? And we can confer with the coastal commission.
Yeah, I just want to point out, Richard, that. There are no TDSF limits on beachfront. Morton was beachfront. He could build anything he wanted wherever he wanted. As long as he had a view corridor, and they were merged.
Okay, I think I, I think those are my questions. I have a few observations here I'd like to add before yielding. Um, the neighborhood character question and the. One of the opponents raised the point of there being a crescent shaped arc in the way that the houses are arranged along the canyon edge. Um. That neighborhood character is not simply height. It also is, refers to masses, it's so-called visual mass. And uh, the, the site plan review allows a certain amount of, of subjectivity about what the neighborhood character actually constitutes. And here we're looking at a situation that's sort of analogous to a string line. Uh, we have the, the way the houses are all situated, none of the existing houses currently impeding anybody else's view. And I know Mr. Schmitz did an analysis on the map showing the different contour lines. But I think that's sort of arbitrary as contrasted to. The actual deployment of the houses at different elevations and how their views are affected. In, in other words, it's a three dimensional situation that he was applying a two dimensional analysis to. Um, so it, it does seem like there's kind of a, a, a slippery slope or a, you know, if, if, if these guys pushed out. As far as they're proposing. The next incredibly wealthy owner along there somewhere is going to try to push out just as far to recapture their view. And you know, you're going to have a, a war going here. So I, I think let's think about this neighborhood character as it's sort of a string line of masses. Um, then next, the roof deck. I'll say it again, there are situations, and I think this is one of them, where. There is an invasion of privacy consideration. It's noise. It's not so much light. They can deal with light. But I think there's a real noise issue here. I think that's problematical. And then finally, I will point out that the fire approval is strange. Given that the walk around distance is supposed to be no more than a hundred and fifty feet. Here, there is on a sheet F1 of 1. The total walk around distance is given as three hundred and fourteen feet. Which means at least one side is too far. Um, and again. We hear, well, the fire department signed off on it, but my question would be how and why? And if this goes back or is an appealed or whatever, then I, I would think somebody would want to look at the uh. Making sure that that safety requirement is complied with. So at, with that, I'll turn it over to whoever would like to pick up the ball.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Okay, um, first. I agree with Craig on the, the view situation. Uh, this is a long established neighborhood. It's the very first neighborhood on Point Dune. And the house that's being torn down is well over fifty years old. Same guy owned it the whole time. So there is a very established character. Uh, now. There are several kinds of bluffs. In the LIP. And the definition. And I'll read you. The definition of bluff edge. The definition of bluff edge is for coastal and canyon bluffs. The bluff edge shall be defined as the upper termination of the bluff cliff or sea cliff. In cases where the top of the cliff is rounded away from the face of the cliff as a result of. Erosional process related to the presence of a cliff, the bluff edge shall be defined as the point nearest to the cliff. Beyond which the downward gradient of the surface increases more or less continuously until it reaches the general gradient of the cliff. In a case where there is a step-like feature at the top of the cliff face, the landward edge of the uppermost riser shall be taken as the bluff edge. Now, if you look at, if you can put up. Uh, aerial view or uh, uh, a. Side view. You will see that the front portion of the lot where the pool and the deck are. Have dropped away from the, the cliff edge. The, the bluff edge is where the house is. Not where the swimming pool is. It's very clear. Uh, and you can see it if you could put up uh. That thing. It's also, you can see it when you look at the, the, as um. Craig mentioned the, the ellipse or whatever everybody lined up along with for the last, actually it's seventy years. Uh, all those houses have lined up along what everybody presumed was the bluffage. And uh, if you could put up an aerial, you'll see where even the first house. Uh, Mr. Keys's house, which is a very large house on a very large lot. Is set back. Um, from the bluffage. And. It's not the ocean bluff, it's the canyon bluff he set back from. That, that house went through a very long process. Um, if, if, I don't know if you could put up an aerial view, uh, but you'll see. What I'm talking about. And so. There is no, in my mind, there's absolutely no question. You have to set back from the top of bluff. Well, we're going into the top of it, over the top of the bluff, extending beyond the top of the bluff, according to the LIP bluff edge definition. Also, um. And I've walked that beach since nineteen seventy-two, uh. For the first forty years, basically daily. And uh. There is no question. The single, the single house, the single story house that is there and Janet Friesen's house are viewable from the beach. The, when you make it a two-story house, it's even more viewable. In fact, they're really the only two viewable houses. When he walks uh, from south to north on the beach. Um. The other houses are set back. You can't even. You can barely see uh, Streisand's three houses. Because they're set back. And uh, so that's, that's the key in my opinion. Yeah, you don't need to. We don't need to ask them to sit back. They need to sit back atop a bluff. And. When, when you look at the contour lines on the, and that's very obvious when you see the uh. The side view of the house that shows the pool. And there's a step down. They built a whole floor there on the step down. They've got a bedroom on. Uh, from the level of the main house. So it steps down. Uh, when you look at the contour lines on the supposed uh. Slope analysis, you'll see it. Uh. Contour lines that are green and contour lines that are yellow are just as far apart. Don't ask me how that happened. I guess computers from the sky do it or something, but when you go there, you see it. You see it on every house. From Keys to uh. To Friesen to Zickland to. This house to. All the way up to the old Snyder House, which was built prior to us adopting the LIP. Um. And that, that is a very strict. Limit. And when it's over four to one. And it is. Uh, it's even more strict, but. And I wish you would put up a, a, that slide, one of Don's slides that shows the aerial viewer, one of yours. It, it's very obvious, uh. And it's much, very obvious when you walk down on it. You walk from the house down to another path. And uh, that path is by this definition. Not to top a bluff. Um, so that's, that's a big problem for me now. Uh. We have a discretion on. Site plan review or whatever it is, uh, on determining whether it's, it's rational and uh. Obviously on Point Doom, the big boy houses are coming in, but if there ever was a neighborhood that. Has a lot of fifties houses, especially before they burned. Uh. This is the neighborhood. Now. That's another point I'd like to bring up is fire safety. I was there on November ninth to two thousand eighteen. I had a hose in my hand at two o'clock in the morning. Putting out a fire in that very canyon. It burned three houses. If we had, if my, myself and four neighbors hadn't put that fire out. This house would have burned. Because you push too far out in the canyon, it's a fire corridor. The fire corridor crosses the highway. It gets extremely windy. The fire department fled. The fire in that canyon, even though the fire station is directly next to it or one lot over. Uh, they left because of that. And uh, so. I have a problem approving projects that are. What I consider not safe. Now, granted. I'm not a fire expert. All I know is I was there and I put it out. Okay, uh. So that's one thing. Now Craig's thing about. Three hundred feet on a, from a fire hydrant or whatever it is, uh, that's important. Our street. Does not have very good fire flow. We, we've had to have two sets of uh. Uh, fire plugs put in. One set has been abandoned because it doesn't have enough fire flow. That's the set on that side of the road. I don't know where they're measuring the, the uh. The hose length from, but the hose length on the south side of the road, the fire plugs on the south side of the road. Don't have pressure. Um, so that's another thing to consider.
So the hose, the hose lay vice chair is seven hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, uh. I don't know where it was measured or whatever, uh, but I just know that side of the street, you shouldn't measure from because they can't turn them on. Um. So that, those two things. Uh. Make it hard for me to make the findings. Uh, now, Esha. I don't know where they get all this fire clearance. Everything's fire cleared, fire cleared. Three of those houses along there were built. At least forty years ago. They didn't have fire clearance zones. They never got a permit to have a new house, so I don't know if they really have fire clearance zones. All I know is you cannot walk. Easily down that canyon. In fact, you probably die. Uh. Uh, so to say there's no riparian habitat. Is. Extremely questionable. To say it's not a river and a. It is a river. It runs all the time. Uh. And uh. So. I'm going to have trouble voting for this. Um. So we can have other people ask questions. I've got a bunch, but why? I've gotten far enough to know that I've got a problem.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jennings.
Thank you. Um. I want to address. Before I get into my questions, I want to address. A couple of things that, that are. I, I know that the neighbors are concerned about. Um. Frank Angel mentioned the idea of the envelope and, and that. This project is not within the envelope. And what he was referring to. Was a practice that we have evolved, evolved first under the municipal code. Of, um. Saying, look, we, we. We have development standards. Height. Uh. Side yard setback, front yard setback, backyard setback, total development square footage. And if you stay within those limitations, within those development limitations that we impose. Um, then you're in the envelope and you can't put your house where you want to put it, as long as you stay within those considerations. And the reason that that all developed. Was because. Uh, in the early days of cityhood, uh, hearings were. Uh, essentially. Um. Sort of popularity contests. Um. Nobody wanted to see a house built. People would gather up their neighbors and bring them down in front of the city council. This is before the, the days of the planning commission, bring them down for the city council. And you know, you kind of count noses. Well, you got eight people who don't want this house and four people who do want this house usually. Uh, it was a contest between people who lived here and vote here. Against those who don't live here and don't vote here, but who wanted to live here. Uh, it's not too hard to figure out how that would often work out. And it was as a result of the. The wild unfairness that was generated in those early years, the bizarre. Uh, treatment of different applications that we finally evolved the idea of the envelope. The idea of the envelope to, to uh, give Mr. Angel's credit, it, it doesn't extend to. Um, the site plan review. Site plan review is outside of the envelope. That's why it's a discretionary review. And I take his point that coastal development permits are also coastal, are also discretionary reviews. That's, that's quite clear. But we have imported from the municipal code, the concept of the envelope. And we use it regularly in coastal development uh, permit proceedings. Um. I'm going to go back through. A couple of points. John. I know you were there when we had the hearings in front of the coastal commission, which our LCP. And LIP were adopted. And, and I know you remember very well. That the trade-off was, you can't develop on Point Doom, you can't develop. Uh, anything steeper than a four to one slope, but there's no Esha on Point Doom. Uh, that was the trade-off. And I remember you there. Um. So I don't think. That the Esha concern is worth talking about too much. Uh, it's, there simply is now Esha on Point Doom by definition. But I want to get back to talking about bluffs because this is the point that has me. Confused. And so I want to ask Lauren if she's still around.
She is.
Can you get her up?
Lauren, please.
There we go. There you are. Okay, so I look at this, at this property. I, I look at the coastal bluff that turns into the canyon. Um, clearly that's a coastal bluff. It looks to me like this is a canyon bluff, if, just by looking at it. But I'm also aware that you guys, the engineers and geologists and all the rest of that stuff have different ways of defining things that laymen don't have. And so I heard you say. When you were asking um, uh, Craig's questions, I heard you say this is not a bluff and it, it was just something you said and was never followed up on. Why are you telling me that this is not a bluff?
Okay, um, this is something that Tyler and I discussed because he, he came to double check on this before the. Staff report was published. So if we look at the LCP and the LIP, what there are definitions for there? There actually is no definition of just bluff.
I know, yeah.
There's, there's a cliff, which is very high, steep perpendicular or overhanging face of rock, a precipice, right? And then under coastal bluff. It says a high bank or bold headland, ten feet or more in vertical extent with a broad precipitous. Sometimes rounded cliff face. So the key here is precipitous. Precipitous means dangerously steep. If you go to Webster's dictionary, because we parsed this through, right? Because it is frustrating that. There isn't just a definition or picture or gradient definition of a bluff, right? And, and I think we can all agree that the LCP, LIP can use some improvement in terms of clarity. And, and I think we can all agree that the LCP LIP can use some improvement in terms of clarity. So. We were looking at the slope. The upper slope is four to one. Or less. When you get further down the slope, it turns into a three and a half to three to one slope. And when you get down near the bottom of the slope, it's about two and a half or two to one. The grading code allows you to. To. Build a two to one slope of fill. And when we talk about something that's precipitous, it's dangerously steep to. Walk over. And in fact, precipice means very steep, perpendicular, overhanging, right? A sheer, almost vertical cliff. Those are, that's, you know. Encyclopedia, the definition. So as we've discussed this over the years and talked about exactly what gradient. Becomes dangerously steep. Most people would agree. And most of the technical professions, professionals within the city is steeper than one to one, meaning forty five degrees. So in this case. Since the bluff, since, since this slope doesn't ever get steeper. Then let's just be more conservative. Two to one at the base of the slope. And as it comes up, it actually shallows up. And, and if you look at the. Look at any one of the slides anybody's put up, uh, in their presentation of the cross section, you can measure it there. It's, it doesn't meet the definition of a bluff because it's not precipitously steep. That's a long explanation. I'm just, that's how we parsed through it. That's. That's why I said what I said.
Okay, so there've been many times in, in hearings on other matters where. Uh. Engineers have produced diagrams showing. With a. A defined line. This is the top of the block, right? Is there, is there no, is that just a? Yes, or I mean, a, a, a thought about, yeah, it looks about right to me. Or is there no engineering definition of? Of how you determine the top of the bluff? Help me out here, yeah.
Well, the. You measure the gradients, right? Um, I mean. And, and so that's how, so, so that's how you do it. And, and that LCP LIP provides some. Some guidance in that you're looking for, and, and so does the coastal, uh, um, commission paper, I think originally written by Johnson. Um, that's been referred to before, where you, where you have. A change, uh, you know, a, a change ingredient too. So I don't know that it's. Strictly precipitously steep. Um, and I will say that bluffs change over time. The, the latest scripts, um. Coastal retreat cliff failure model that they're looking at, they're using LIDAR data. And it's very telling to me that they have two metrics that they're using. One is the top of bluff retreat rate. And the other is the bluff, the retreat rate of the face of the bluff, because what they're looking at is. Is this steepening? Or is it getting shallower, right? Uh, it's coastal bluff. You know, overlooks a body of water. So that's one of the definitions. But if you're talking about something that's not a coastal bluff and you want to know whether it's a bluff or not, you're really looking at gradients.
Okay, so my. One of my primary concerns is that. The principles of the LIP and the. The, uh. Our. CD, our, our, our coastal process. Are applied consistently. And so I guess that's my next question is. Is the determination in. In your view and the view of staff in general. That. Uh, this lot does not exhibit a, a bluff. Is that consistent with the way we have applied these rules? Across the board in other areas where people are building. Next to bluffs. Is this, is this? Are we doing something different here than we have done in other cases in the past?
No, not based on my review of this and on my experience. Um, and on the particular. Situation for this slope in which there have been no. Um, obvious manmade changes, right? That would confuse things like. There have been in other cases on some of the lots we've looked at, right? Where there've been grading or, or. There's various features that have been added or changed or. So I think that this is consistent with. With what has been done, um, at least in terms of the type of staff interpretation. I, I can't say for, can't speak for anybody else.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, if I could add to the Zicklin residence, two houses up. I reviewed that, uh, report and, uh, the bluff top findings. Were not required for that as well. So if this was considered a bluff. You know, today it wasn't, it wasn't analyzed in that project.
Okay, so.
I think it's a area that could use some clarification in the LCP LIP, I think, to ensure the consistency that you're concerned about, Commissioner Jennings.
Well. The LIP was not written by technical people, so.
Yes, I remember.
There are a lot of problems.
Okay, may I drop a?
I'm sorry?
Have I answered your question?
Yeah, I think you have, yeah, as, as well as, you know, to the extent there is an answer, yes. Um, all right, so, uh, I appreciate that. The, um. So just to finish off the, the, the. The idea of where we are and how. We have applied rules in the past. We have never. In, at least in my experience, ever tried to establish that a, a property owner. Needed to apply. A, a view corridor. Um, diagonally across this property. Uh, it's never been. Done. It's never been suggested. And I, I guess the point is, it, it puts me back in mind of. Of the early days of the city. It's, it's. If the task is to find some reason to block a project. There's. All kinds of ways to do that. And you know, some of them involve novel interpretations, some of them involve. Of just stretching stuff, but. But if that's not the goal that I feel is appropriate for. Uh, us, we should look at the rules. As Don Schmitz started off in his presentation, I believe this is, with the exception of this bluff issue, which I still find. Uh, a little confusing. Apart from that, I think this is, is a clean sheets project. With the exception of the site plan review and the city councils. Established, um. Not very early in the process, but at least it was a couple of years ago, that what we want to look at in a site plan review. For height. Is the impact of that. Portion, that portion that's over eighteen feet. Uh, not the entire property, not whether it's setback from string lines and all the rest of the stuff. And in this case, I don't think there really can be much of an argument that the portion of the property over eighteen feet. Has much of an impact on anybody. They. Issues of, of, uh. Impacts, impacts of neighborhood character have to be related to the portion of the building that's over eighteen feet, if you want to be consistent. With what we have done in the past. And, and the same thing goes on with, you know, with invasion of privacy. I mean, I, 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 I've heard. Commissioner Hill make this argument before. That. We can draw principles and rules from. Concerns that are expressed. In the LIP or, or, uh. In the, uh. Coastal Act. And, and, and the problem I have with that is that, you know, as I've said. I think the rules ought to be formulated in such a way that. Somebody who wants to develop their property. Can look at the rules and say, okay, I ought to be able to do this because these are the development standards. And if we add to the development standards, oh, and you also have to go and satisfy, um. Whatever whims there may be from the five unelected guys who are sitting as the planning commissioner. It makes it a little difficult to say that the rules are. Are predictable. So that's why I object to, to that approach. I don't see, I, I, the, the question has, has sort of been distorted in terms of whether there, whether the property could be or whether the house could be seen. From a beach or whether it's a private beach or not a private beach. The question is whether it would have. A substantial impact, that substantial. Uh, visual impact. And again, with it, this whole canyon has a background and backdrop of vegetation. Uh, I agree with Tyler, uh, that it wouldn't have a significant. Impact on, uh. On the, on visual impact, regardless of whether it's a private beach or a public beach. So those are my comments.
Okay, um. I'm gonna be fairly quick here. Uh, I think listening to Vice Chair Mazza talk about being able to walk down that. Bluff. Tells me that it's not precipitous, that you are able to get down it. Most of the bluffs in the area that you live are straight up and down and a hundred feet high. So. This didn't show a top of bluff line because there's so much. Property out towards the canyon. It's pretty flat, really, that, that that's not the issue. It's not like what we had at Broad Beach. Where we had the top of bluff and then went down behind the Riley's and all that stuff. We had a line to work with. But that was this way. This isn't. This. Plattens out over there. Um. The only thing I was thinking, I'm looking at the, the picture, switching gears, so switch, standing at the Penns residence and looking. Uh, out to the water, um, I believe the. The story pole line is the top of the railing for the deck. So the deck is actually forty two inches lower than that. So, but the, to me, the big, the big thing here was that. Mr. Schmidt just yanked out a bunch of the house right out there. I mean, just. Took it away. It's not like he came to us and went, well, you know, maybe we could use an extra three hundred and twenty feet. Can you guys work that into the schedule? He didn't. He, he, and as Mr. Zicklin, you know, he was on his heels, he said. They yanked that out of there. So that's a significant. Portion of the house that's gone. It would made a difference to a couple of different homeowners. So. Um, I think by doing that, uh, it's, I think it's, it's made a difference, you know, there's. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people on this screen here on, uh, on the one I'm on now, and as I click the. Page two, there's, there's a lot of people watching this, so, um. I just think that with, with him yanking that thing out of there like that, that, uh. That made quite a difference on, on the impact on, on everybody. So, uh, I think maybe just a couple of short comments. We're at the nine. Uh, clock mark right now, and I'm sure somebody's gonna have to go to the bathroom and. But, uh, real quickly, uh, Commissioner Hill, I'll, I'll give you a minute.
Yeah, okay. Um, on, on the bluff question, yeah, we, we do have a bluff edge definition. And in terms of the slopes and what is precipitous or not, precipitous and precipice are from the same root, but they mean different things. We don't know if it's precipitous further down closer to the canyon, because there's a lot of, uh, Esha type vegetation there ironically. Um, but assuming it, it may well be precipitous down at the bottom. We then have this bluff edge definition that says you keep going up the steps and the risers till you get to the flat part at the top. So if it's precipitous at the bottom, that makes it a bluff. And then you find the edge by going up to the top, so.
Would you mind if I just make one remark to, uh, Craig? I, I, I understand what you're saying, but my problem with this is that. That. If, if the land generally slopes. Just generally slopes down to a, a bottom, whether it's a river bottom or whatever it is, but the land just continually slopes. It could slope for twenty miles. How do you, how do you say, okay, when does it stop being a bluff and when is it just? A sloping land? I mean, they're really, that, that's the problem I'm having. That, I, I find no limiting principle in what you're saying.
Well, in this case, we have the, the, the steeper part right down at the bottom that may, may or may not be precipitous. And then it comes up and it levels a little bit, but then it goes maybe a little bit, but then it keeps up. And then. There is a distinct point where you reach level that is, you know, basically the parcel itself. And that, that you would say that, that would be the edge. That would be one way to define it. Um, and then just to point out that, uh. Tyler said that they looked at the Zicklands and that was not analyzed as a coastal bluff, but that is further inland, so conceivably. This issue that we never definitively worked about, out about. Where you draw that boundary between coast versus canyon. Um, that might be a distinguishing factor from the Zickland analysis. And then. And I'll just, the one sentence, yeah, privacy concerns, privacy, privacy is a right. It's in the LCP. Uh, it is general language, you're right, but it's there nonetheless. And then my final point. Is that. The development area here that they've proposed is four hundred and fifty feet deep. And it's a deep lot. The lot is even deeper than that. It's very deep. So. When we're talking about, uh, the neighborhood character and trying to conform with the existing crescent shaped arc. It's not like we're talking about a hardship in the way that sometimes if we have a string line thing or whatever, it's like, well, where are you gonna put them? Cause they're backed up against PCH and how, how do you move the house back without making it smaller? Here, there's a lot of room. They could pull it back and still not be anywhere near the street. So, you know, if you look at, if it's four hundred and fifty feet, if they. The, the, the neighbor saying, let's pull it back thirty five feet, but they also proposed an alternate, uh. Sort of their compromise solution would be to pull it back twenty five feet. That's a reduction of five point six percent. So by changing that slight amount, that would make a lot of people much more happy and might well avoid a lot of litigation. Um, I, I, I think that's a constructive way to look at it. There's a compromise position there that both. Pulls it back off the bluff, uh. Mit, mitigates those issues and, um. You know, there's still plenty of room there, so. Four hundred and fifty. Down to four hundred and twenty five feet of, of a development area. That's, that's still a big place.
I, go ahead, Commissioner Jennings.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, um, that. As someone who's. Recently dealt with architects, um. Here's what I would propose. I, 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 I don't. I don't disagree that this project. All projects. Move much more smoothly if you. Bring the neighbors along and. Collaborate with them and all the rest of that stuff. We don't make that a requirement. And again, I'll, I'll fall back on the. The envelope concept, but if I were, um. If I were Mr. Schmidt's client, I might say, uh, you know, we've put. Maybe a quarter million dollars, maybe more. Into what we've done so far. If you want us to. Redesign the project. Pay us a quarter million dollars and, and, and maybe we'll move it back thirty five feet. I mean. Uh, for the people who can afford to live on the edge of, 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 uh, of this particular bluff, I think that that might be a deal for them. They might be willing to, to reimburse him for his, for his, uh, consultants and architects fees. Just a thought.
My turn? You, you get a, you get a minute.
I'm done, I'm done. Oh, yeah, John, sorry.
I get it as long as I need, um. You just answered the question, Jeff. People who live on a bluff may want to pay a quarter of a million dollars. Okay, they live on a bluff. That's what we're talking about. I read you the.
You got me, John.
I read you the bluff edge definition. Lauren never mentioned the word coastal bluff. Okay? Not once. But it's in the LIP.
It's not a coastal bluff.
Says who?
I respectfully disagree. I did mention coastal bluff.
Okay. Okay, well. The LIP gives a definition of how you count bluffs. Now. To say. That you could take any lot. On that side of the street, all the way up to the coast highway, with the exception of the very last lot on the highway. You cannot walk from the top of the bluff to the stream. Directly down. You would die. Okay? This is, and to have after thirty two years or thirty three years of a city. To come out in a meeting like this and redefine. What a bluff is. By a staff person. Oh, it's gotta be one to one or two to one or three to one. I have never once. And neither has Jeff. Had anybody ever make that argument? Seen it in that, in a planning commission hearing. Oh, my. Ocean facing bluff. Isn't a bluff because it's not one to one. Or it's not two to one. It's X. Not one single application out of thousands and thousands and thousands of. It's X. Not one single application out of thousands and thousands and thousands of them. Okay, now, if you look at the. Aerial of that, you have a. House that would probably go for a couple hundred million dollars right now, three doors down. It had to back off. It had to back off from the block. From the canyon block. Look at it substantially. Okay.
You mean that we, we imposed a bluff setback on that house? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, okay.
I thought, I thought, uh, Senior Tyler Eaton said that he, you know, if you're talking about the Zicklands that.
No, I'm talking about the Keys. I'm talking about the Keys. Okay? And. But my main point is not once in the history of Malibu. Has that definition that we just heard. Been ever uttered at a planning commission meeting. Not once. Okay? And we're not here to make up stuff. That's when you would amend the LIP. The LIP, I read you what they said. About canyon bluffs and coastal bluffs and how you calculate them. We've done it hundreds and hundreds of times.
Okay.
We cannot sit here.
We've got.
We gotta do it because Lauren said that's the way to do it. Okay?
That's your point. You told.
And, and so when, and when you talk about the steepness. Now, one person here has ever walked down to the bottom of it because you can't. Okay, you can't. Now. That's a fact. So. We aren't here to change the definitions and so this house can be done. I read you the definition. It's right out of the LIP. You can go look it up. It's bluff edge definition. Okay, it's very clear. So. We, we can try to justify a house. Or look at, uh, look at a, a site plan review and say, well, you know, everybody else did it this way for seventy years, but this is different. Okay, which is what we're saying. This is different. It doesn't follow that curve. And block. What people have built houses on and expected to build houses on on that side of the street. Now. Across this, across the gully. Totally different rules. It's not point two. Okay, on that same stream upstream, if you turn right instead of left when it forks, not point two. But this is point two. These are the rules on point two. Four to one counts on point two. Top of blood edge counts. Uh, there are issues on point two. If you ever read the coastal act. The whole canyon up from, uh.
Yeah, the one.
Isn't Esha, okay? And if you read the stream definition, four point two. It talks about riparian habitats and, and the Department of Fish and Game and blah, 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 blah. So we're glossing over what the real situation is and we're changing. On the fly, the way everything has been done for thirty years. Especially since two thousand and two, when they defined all this stuff. And. Have staff come up with another house where we ignored it. We, we are now in, in. There's an appeal situation in northern, uh, e- western Mal- eastern, western Malibu, um. Where we have this fictitious bluff. Okay, we invented that coastal didn't invent it. Not in front of coastal. Well, let's see, we'll see what happens there. So, uh, I'm assuming. Once we make a vote on this, if it's appealed, it will go to the coast, go to city council as the staff report was presented. It's, it, you cannot reinvent the project and go to a different body and call it an appeal. Okay, so if we wanted to continue the hearing and rehear it with the, the changes, we can do that. But I'm gonna make a motion to deny. And, uh. That's my motion right now.
So I, I think I know where we're headed here. Mr. Donigan, with how, how would? First, I would, I would ask Mr. Schmitz, does he want to continue? Or do we, how do we take a vote? Since we're gonna be two to two and we go to city council with this. Can we make a recommendation and go straight to city council? Uh, and take a vote from that?
I asked, uh, I asked Richard the same question. He gave me an answer earlier about what happens in the event that, you know. Happens in any situation where, where there's only four.
Okay.
Mission members.
Director Malika, go ahead.
Before I go over to, to Richard, I, I, I would just say the one step before that is that we, of course, will a staff. You know, you guys are decision makers. I understand the, the, the numbers. That's not lost on me. So we may press you at least once if there's any. Change, if there's any modification or anything like that, we would attempt to flesh that out and Director Malika, the floor is yours regarding the. Two, two stalemate should we get there?
Y- yes, we need. Uh, and Pat, feel free to jump in here if maybe I over explain or under explain, but an, an action has to be taken on this application. Um, i- i- because then that way, for example, if someone wanted to appeal it, they, they would need, you could only appeal an action. Uh, so in the past, what we've done, i- if it turns out that there is a, there's gonna be a two, two vote, uh, as Pat mentioned, we. Will ask you to, to talk, uh, uh, to speak again and, and try one more time. If not. Then our, what we ask then is that we document the inability of the commission. To, uh, come to a con- a, a, a consensus or a majority vote. In which case, uh, the matter then is forwarded, you're relinquishing the planning commission's jurisdiction and giving it back. To the council for them to, uh, hear the item. And this would then be forwarded to them.
And then as part of that process, we as staff would do our best to document the positions. If there's two or if there's more in that staff report to the city council and explaining. Why the planning commission was unable to come to a consensus via a majority vote, vote of the quorum here, three out of four. So does that make sense, Chair Smith?
It does. Uh, so I guess I have, I would ask Mr. Schmitz if he wants to continue, if he feels that he could make changes to make this work. Or if he wants to go to city council, is that something I, I can ask him?
Yeah, I think it. Oh. Do you, Chair Smith? No, uh, we're not inclined to continue this further. Uh, we would like to move it forward. It's been four or five years we've been working on this.
Okay, question, Mr. Donigan. Uh, in the past, and the, the, the city council has brought this point up recently. We've had appeals. Or, or things we voted on get changed between the time we vote on them and they go to city council. Well, I'm making a motion to deny this project. Number twenty oh six eight as presented tonight. That's my motion. Now, I, I, I do not think it's proper. To have staff redesign it with the applicant and then go to another body with a different project. So that's why I'm making the motion that way.
Before I would second the motion, I would ask if given that they are already. Saying they will redesign and want to propose a different project, omitting that. End of the, uh, project. If there's, would be any appetite to say, well, since we're. Going back to the drawing table anyway to continue it and pull the house back, not the thirty five feet that the neighbor, uh, asked for. But the twenty five feet that would be acceptable. Could we continue it? If we're redesigning it, can then, I.
It's Craig, they'd have to, Don would have to agree to do that and bring it back here.
And I guess we're hearing from him that he, he, that he's just not prepared to do that. Okay. Well, in that case, I'll second John's motion.
Okay, just, uh, just before we go, I, I think there's a difference between this situation and the situation that the city council. Dealt with, uh, recently. And that is that the proposed changes that, uh, the applicant has offered. Have been put in front of us and, and, and been debated by us. Whereas I understand, this is my impression, that in that other case. Uh, we, the, 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 the. Commission denied the project and then it was redesigned after it had left the commission and before it got to the city council. So I, that may, that may be a difference.
I want to make a point that there isn't a difference because it was not presented to us, quote, including. What essentially is the public.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and unless it's public record. That we're considering. Considering what if I do this, what if I do that is not public record. We didn't get any drawings.
Okay, John, it's really, it's, it's really the, the council that's gonna decide whether you're right or wrong. So.
Director Malika?
Well, I think our attorneys will decide that because they have to follow the procedures of the coastal act. Which says you can appeal a project to the city council. Not create a new one and present them to the city council.
Okay, Director Malika?
Thank, thank you very much, Chair. Uh, to be clear here and, and Pat, please, once again, if I misspeak, feel free to jump in. Um. But in the past, yes, previous councils have allowed for changes to be considered. Uh, we've put a stop to that practice. Whatever gets voted on tonight is what's gonna be presented to the council. Um, and Pat, I would say that. The change, because it was presented in the presentation and discussed by this commission. That would end up going to the council. Uh, no more changes after this, this item terminates would be accepted. Uh, correct?
We will, we will accurately document what occurred here tonight. That, that, that is all staff is doing. We are not. Giving this applicant any special privileges. We are not saying you get to redesign the project. We are saying, we will say, here is what came in the door. And then I guess there may or may not have been an, an email sent to, to city staff about a week, a week ago, if I, if I heard Mr. Schmitz correctly. Nonetheless, Mr. Schmitz put that on the record. It was responded to by numerous members of the public. Albeit, they felt like it was kind of at the eleventh hour, so that's, that, that, that's not lost on me, but that was put into the record and that will be. Put before council to, as, as Commissioner Jennings said, weigh that and, 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 and decide. How they, how they will. Um, Vice Chair Mazza, I will say, as it pertains to the appeal. This is a bit of a different scenario because, and once again, assuming it stays two, two, there will be no action. There's nothing to appeal. Rather, we will ask that the city, that the planning commission make a motion effectuating that, saying, hey. We understand we cannot make a, a decision, i.e. two on, on both sides. Therefore, we direct staff to bring this to the city council.
Right. And what I'm saying, what I'm saying is. Daft doesn't even, does not even acknowledge that they received this into the record prior to the hearing.
I would strongly object to characterizing it as having been aired. Cause you've seen the light, because what, we don't know. We haven't seen the actual plan. We don't, you know, for all I know, I might have looked at it and said, you know what? That works for me. I don't know. And in terms of the public notice, the, the public hasn't had a chance to weigh in on this. This, Don showed it. The, in his initial presentation for like literally five seconds. And so the public was like, huh, what? And they haven't had any opportunity to have a comment on it since then. So I, I don't think we can call it a revised, somehow revised project.
And once again, if I, if I had said that we are going to refer to it as a revised project, I don't believe I, 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 I use those words if I.
No, you didn't. You didn't, but I'm.
They, 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 they were an error. What we will do is we will explain exactly what happened during tonight's meeting. That is what we will do. We will not say that they. I will, we, we, we will not use any descriptive adjectives on the efficacy or accuracy of what they did. We will simply say. During their presentation, this is what the applicant stated and offered or proposed.
Okay, but I want you to use the word very in characterizing my reaction.
Okay, so I think, I think we know where we are. I guess we have to officially probably take a roll call. But then I would like to. Have staff take it to city council, but I guess we'll, uh.
We.
Staff doesn't take it to city council, but the applicant.
Oh, come on. Take a vote.
If they don't appeal, they don't appeal. They have no right to go to city council.
Take a vote.
We have a motion, motion to, to deny, correct?
Correct, and, and, and Commissioner Hill, I, I believe you seconded, correct?
Uh, if I didn't, I will now.
Got it. Thank you.
I didn't hear you. Was that me?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Chair Smith?
No.
Motion fails.
May we have a break?
Um, no, 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 no.
Yeah, no, yeah, looks, we need, we should, we should finish this.
I'll, I'll move the staff recommendation.
I second it.
Call the vote.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, we've gone both directions.
Anything else?
I apologize. I don't mean to, to beat a, a dead horse here, but it would be. You know, it, it is incumbent on me to just put it out there to either Commissioner Hill, Vice Chair Mazza, or Commissioner, Chair Smith, or, you know, Commissioner Jennings. Is there anything, any change, modification, new information that you may not have that would change your mind?
Well, I think I already said that, that I think if they pulled it back as suggested, uh, by some of the neighbors, that that, that would. That would make it more congenial to me.
I think your question was, is there anything that would change my mind? If they came back with a different project, I'd look at it and, and consider it under the rules of the LIP. With an open mind.
Yeah.
But they're, but they aren't, they aren't doing that. So it's, you. You got two more people to answer.
I, I'm, I'm trying to think how that, how it even applies to our situation, uh. I don't think that there are any facts that would cause me to. Well, there might be facts.
Yeah, you might get an answer from the coastal commission saying, how'd you invent a bluff like that?
No, John, actually. What I remember from the coastal commission was it's your, it's your LCP, you deal with it. But. I know you've always favored interpretations of the coastal commission. No, I can't think of anything.
And neither can I.
I know we have a break.
We, 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 we do need to, to, to wrap this up. So, so Director Malika, I believe that the last time, and, and correct me if I'm wrong. There was a motion from the planning commission directing staff to basically accurately reflect what went on tonight's meeting. And then, and then matriculate this up to the city council for them to decide with the, with the, with the statement that the. Planning commission was, was, was deadlocked at, at two, two and could not make a decision.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we're deadlocked and we need council to break the deadlock.
I, I just wanna make sure.
I'll second it.
Okay, I, I just wanted to comment. I just want to make sure. That they are presented with what we are presented. Ours was verbal.
Have you listened to him?
And, uh, we, we were presented.
I will, yes, we, we will, we will lay it out just the way it, 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 it happened tonight. I will make sure to work with Director Malika and his staff. And it will, it will accurately reflect what occurred during this, this past hour and a half or so.
And that we recommend that they, uh, give some guidance to staff to say that when there are last minute changes that are substantial. That we recommend a continuance.
Is that part of your motion?
Uh, that's part of, well, it, it, it doesn't need to be insofar as it's reflecting the record that they're now gonna be referring back to.
Okay, then I will continue to support your motion and second it.
Yeah.
Um, Chair Smith, would you like me to call the roll?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, break. What do you want? Seven minutes, eight minutes?
How long does it take to brew a cup of tea? Give me eight minutes.
You got it.
Two weeks.
Eight minutes, yeah.
Gentlemen, let's make sure all cameras, mics are off and, and please do not communicate with anyone about planning commission business.
Oh, come on.
So we will resume at nine forty six?
Correct.
Thank you. It's more difficult than it would sound to be. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
God, I, you know, this scares me not talking on the ADUs. Um, I'm going to go no on this. But, okay.
Motion carries.
Okay, I guess we go right into, uh, five B, I believe.
Where am I, Tom?
Everybody, here we go. Request for determination of use number twenty-two dash zero zero one. Private tattoo studio in a commercial neighborhood zoning district. Staff report, please. We have planning, we have P T Martinez on this one.
Yes, uh, good evening.
Oh, there he is, very good.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission. Um, so this evening, the item we have for you tonight, uh, is for the determination of use reference as number twenty-two dash zero zero one. Uh, for two four nine five five, PCH on sweep, for sweep B two oh three and B two oh four. Um, next slide, please. So the following images include an aerial and vicinity map outlining the property in a yellow border, which is northeast of PCH and Purple Canyon Road. Next, next slide, please. They fall in as the front elevation of the building, which is approximately twenty thousand one hundred and twenty-two square feet. Next slide, please. So. Tattoo studios are a part of a highly regulated, uh, industry with regard to cleanliness and health safety, which may be similar to and not more. Uh, objectionable to a beauty salon. Many beauty salons provide similar services that include permanent makeup by way of tattooing. Um, beauty salons are a permitted use in a CN zone. Although the private tattoo studio provides beauty, uh, beautification services, uh, and is expected to generate similar parking demand as a beauty salon. Due to the safety concerns about needles, sterilization, and risk of infection. Uh, the proposed use may be similar to and not more objectionable than a medical office use. The MMC does not allow for medical office use in a CN zone, but it does allow for a veteran, veterinary hospital as a conditionally permitted use. Which staff believes a veterinary, uh, uses, uh, poses, I should say, similar sanitation and sterilization concerns as a tattoo studio. Keep in mind that the LCP does allow for a medical use in a CN zone. Next slide, please. So the applicant proposes to convert, um, two units. So in this case, it would be B two oh three, B two oh four. Both units, uh, total approximately five hundred and fifty-one square feet of an existing beauty salon into one unit for the private tattoo studio. There will be two artists. Um, it'll be by appointment only. They'll have two service chairs. And they will be providing services to one, just one client per day. Um, they also intend not to advertise their, their business. Next slide, please. So regarding the parking, the site provides twenty-two parking spaces. Beauty salons require three parking spaces for each of the first two service chairs. And one and a half spaces for each additional chair. If the proposed use determined is similar to a beauty salon, then a total of six parking spaces are required. Um, assuming that the current, uh, beauty salons occupy at least three service stairs. They currently would be required to have seven and a half parking spaces. In this case, the tattoo studio will not be intensified in the parking. Next slide, please. So here we have a table of the cities, uh, near Malibu and how they approve their tattoo studios. As we can see. City of Moser Beach, they currently allow them in a C two, which is their downtown commercial, C three, which is their general commercial. For Santa Monica, they allow them in their CN, which is commercial neighborhood. GC, which is general commercial mixed use districts, and Culver City, they allow it in all zoning districts. So keep in mind, though, that although they are permitted, uh, they do have special restrictions, which include, but are not limited to, uh, separation from schools. Uh, so distance requirements from residential and distant requirements to other similar uses. Next slide, please. So the question before the planning commission is whether the proposed use is similar to not more objectionable than the permitted uses or conditionally permitted uses. Uh, listed in the CN zone of the MMC and else.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, uh? Have any exporte conversations with anybody on this?
I did. I, I had a conversation with the property owner, uh. Months ago, I think he asked me about how to go about. Securing permission. I told him if it were me, I'd just lease the space out and forget about it, but when somebody complains, but I guess he didn't take my advice.
Uh-huh. None. Commissioner Hill?
None.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Mazza?
None.
Commissioner Peak?
Negative.
And I didn't either, so. Okay, um, public hearing. Oh, Commissioner Jennings?
Just a question for staff. I, I've heard you say that doctors' offices aren't permitted. In the CN zone, and I'm looking down at attachment two. And it lists the things that are permitted, uh. Barber shops, beauty salon, so on and so on. And then it's under office and health uses. It says medical, dental, physical therapy, and veterinary clinics and offices with a footnote. That says CUP for veterinary hospitals. So. How did you get to the conclusion that doctors' offices aren't permitted in this zone?
That was actually my, my mistake. That attachment two is actually part of the LCP, not the MMC.
So, this was my question too.
Okay, so under the MMC. They're not, they're not permitted, they're conditionally permitted. Is that right?
Under the MMC, uh, medical, medical office is actually not sold out. It's an unpermitted use.
Is it permitted, conditionally permitted or not permitted at all?
Not permitted at all, but the LCP allows, uh, medical use in a CN zone.
Which, which are we, what, what are we applying today? Are we under the LIP or the, or the MMC?
Typically, the past practices, whatever the most restrictive is, that is what, that is what we apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Public comment?
This won't be as quick as I thought it would be because I saw the same thing Jeff saw.
Um, yes, public comment. Rebecca, we have anybody?
Yes, we do. Um, and we're going to open with the applicant, Catriona McDade Kelly. And if you could bring up her slide presentation, please. Hey, my name is Katz and I'm speaking on behalf of Rox and myself. We'd like to first of all, thank you all for hanging in here so late, esteemed members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. Um, and considering our proposal to open our private studio in beautiful Malibu. If I could have the next slide, please. Both Rox and I are fine artists. We have five decades of experience between us. We consider ourselves extremely fortunate to have people travel to us from around the country and the world who trust us to adorn their bodies with our work. We take our work extremely seriously. The space we work.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The, the space we work from is sacred and of the utmost importance to us. We do not identify with the traditional tattoo industry or the typical noise, hustle and bustle experience that they offer their clients. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so Rox is an internationally recognized and trailblazing tattooer in the industry. Her distinctive large-scale black work and geometric tattooing is immediately recognizable. I've listed some of her achievements above. Um, so her work was featured on the Ellen Show. She tattooed Ricky Martin. And when he was last interviewed, they went into great detail about his tattoo. She was included in a fashion exhibition at the Museum of Modern Art in New York. She was invited to speak, um, at the Natural History Museum in Los Angeles on a panel about women in tattooing. Uh, her work was also included in the Netflix series Tattoos Explained. And most recently, she was invited to collaborate with Callaway on a completely blacked out. Um, edition of their golf clubs. Next slide, please. Um, we totally understand that you probably have many concerns. And, you know, if you're not fully familiar with tattooing, we can understand why, so we wanted to address a few of those. Um. We are the only two artists that work at the studio. Um, we are the only two artists that work at the studio, so. We don't have additional chairs, we don't have additional artists, and that would potentially increase, increase foot traffic and vehicle traffic. Um. We only work on one person per day. And often this client works with us for multiple consecutive, consecutive days. So this potentially means that each of us only have two different clients per artist per week. Um, we only work four or five days a week. So typically we have one client for two or three consecutive days. And then another client for two or three consecutive days. Um, and we also ask clients not to bring friends um or family members to the space as it's disruptive to us also. We are super fortunate to have a very exclusive clientele who wait years for appointments. And often travel to us from around the world and the country. Um. And so as I said, all of our clients schedule their appointments years in advance. And this eradicates the usual tat- tattoo studio hangout atmosphere or the rowdy walking clients looking for impulsive tattoos. We don't accept walk-ins or advertise our location. We just don't have time for walk-in clients. Um. Our hours are one to seven and we don't work after hours. Tattooing is our business and we treat it as such. We have really strong boundaries around our private time. And we don't work past seven P M or early in the morning. And most of our clients compare our studio to a more of a spa-like environment rather than a typical tattoo studio. We play mellow electronic music, our space is clean and white, and um it has some of our artwork on the walls. And all of our clients think of it as more of a tattoo of this bar environment. Uh, next slide, please. So in relation to sanitation. We understand that there is a common misconception that tattooing is a bloody business. But we also have, but we have a lot less contaminated waste than you would think. It's exactly the same as permanent makeup. Which, of which there are many studios already operating in Malibu. Technicians practicing permanent makeup require the same health department licensing and permitting that we do. They produce the same volume of contaminated waste. Our waste is actually nowhere near the level of a doctor's office or vet practice, for example. Most tattoo studios have a dirty room. We do not. A dirty room is a space where tattooers and assistants clean contaminated reusable equipment. They use autoclaves and ultrasonic machines to further sterilize their tools. This process causes a lot of contaminated aerosol spray into the environment. Being able to dispose of our equipment or wipe it down with Medi wipes, which are exactly the same as those that are used in hospitals. And kill all germs. Um, this minimizes most major sanitation concerns. All of our needles and hazardous waste go into sharps containers and we have a hazardous disposal pickup for them. We use Medi waste to pick up our sharps containers. We also work really closely with L A County and follow their health and safety requirements strictly. Our former studio was in San Francisco and the health department actually used it as an example to show trainees. And as for documentation, as it was an ideal clean space for tattooing. Due to our high standards of cleanliness and stringent project protocols to avoid cross-contamination. Next slide, please. So really, we just hope to add to the rich, creative, diverse culture of Mal, of the Malibu community. Thank you so much for your time and please feel free to ask any questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Public speakers.
Yeah, public speakers.
I apologize, I still having trouble with that mute button. Our next speaker is Mark Goldman and I believe he is a member of the applicant team. Um, which would give him the time remaining from Katz's presentation, which is eight minutes and fifty-eight seconds. If I'm mistaken about that, please do let me know that, Mark. If there's anyone else present in the meeting who wishes to speak on this item and did not sign up in advance, please click the raise hand button as he makes his comments.
Hi, everyone. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to address all of you. Appreciate the uh planning commission's time on this issue and also uh, uh, the people in Malibu for this consideration. Uh, I, I, this is not a long thing. I just wanted to mention. That my family has owned this building for uh thirty years. Uh, we have always maintained it in a A plus um status. Uh, both from a grounds perspective and from a clientele perspective. Uh, we did extensive work uh to vet um uh Rocks and Cat. And make sure that they were the types of uh tenants that we could be proud of in our building. It matters tremendously to us. Uh, none of the um tenants in our building have uh raised an issue whatsoever. About uh, about Rocks and Cat uh being uh part of the building. And I did want to address one thing that was in the uh, the report that came around. Uh, there was a mention that there's twenty-two parking spaces on the um, on the property. There's actually ninety parking spaces. So uh, I believe that the twenty-two. Um, may solely refer to the visitor spaces that are down in the lower lot. Uh, but we also have a fairly uh large lot up uh top. Where all of the uh tenants actually park. And there's uh roughly sixty or more reserved spaces up there. So parking, uh, our, our parking ratio, I believe, is one of the highest in Malibu, if not the highest in Malibu. And uh, and shouldn't be a problem uh for, for this practice. So just wanted to thank you all and, and clarify that issue and uh, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mark. And I'm not seeing any other hands in the meeting. Let me scroll through. I believe that. That was Kat.
And then Joe Drummond has, has her hand up as well.
Oh. I am not seeing Joe these days.
Hi.
There you are. You're further up than I thought. Um, give me just one second. I'll start a clock for you.
I'll be sure.
Okay, go ahead then.
To say, I really appreciate that incredible presentation by Kat and. Um, although I never want my kids to go to this, to make an appointment, I really appreciate the art and I think you guys should approve this. It sounds good.
Thank you, Joe. And then Kat, uh, did you wish to make an, any additional comments or do you just need to lower your hand?
Sorry, no, I don't know why my hand is raised.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, back to us. Commissioner Hill?
Uh, yeah, could I get a black and white plaid tattooed on my torso? No.
How about a thirteen on your forehead and you can move to El Salvador?
Uh, a couple of questions for staff. Um, she mentioned permanent makeup as, as sort of an analogous precedent here. What, what is that? And is that something, is that in fact the same, basically the same thing or? Are we talking about apples and oranges here or?
I think she was just trying to compare it to another thing that's going on already in Malibu.
Yes, and, and but is, is that, if that's been permitted and legitimate, how different is this? Is it, is this, does that just sort of say this is a done deal or?
I don't know if she knows whether that's been permitted and legitimate or not. I just think that she's commenting that she knows that it exists here.
But staff doesn't, you guys don't have any uh, have you not made any decisions about a permit or not for something called permanent makeup?
No, so that came up uh based on research that I've done. So based on that. Um, about eighty-five percent of beauty salons are doing, are doing permanent makeup. And digging deeper into that research, it's essentially the same process. Um. Uh, even from the, the type of machinery that they use, it's all exactly the same. Usually a permanent makeup can last, depending on the type of ink from the research conducted, to even six years or more. Um, so it's essentially the same deal, but yeah.
And you mentioned Santa Monica and a couple of the places had uh, uh, additional restrictions. You said something about not being near schools and I forget what else, what, what were the others?
So, um, in detail, I would have to go ahead and uh look into exactly which, which ones uh required which. But from all the ones that I generated, uh, they have certain distance requirements from a residential area. Uh, distance requirements from another tattoo established establishment and then uh from public schools.
And a, as far as you know, there, those are the only additional restrictions. There aren't some other things that we might have. Think, look back and go, oh, we should have thought of that and, you know.
There may be, there may be more. Those are the ones that popped up. I would have to look into their, their codes a little more uh strict. But those are the ones that popped up because um, here we do have residential sites. I thought that was important.
Okay, one, one more question.
Yeah.
How, how, this is for, this is for the commission, I guess more generally. How would we distinguish this from the next application where they, they want to do tattoos next to the playground at Country Mark? Walk-ins or something. Could, could we say something like? We would allow these things if, as long as they're not taking walk-ins or, you know, are, are we opening any floodgates here that anybody's concerned about?
The, the answer would be, if I might, is to find this to be a use which is not. It's consistent with or not more, uh, what is it? Not more offensive than the uses that are allowed in the zone with a C U P. Uh, Katrina went through a, 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 a long presentation of the things that they do to make sure. That uh, you know, it doesn't become a problem. You, you do all those things in the C U P. That's what a C U P is for. So if you, uh, the other option is to find it, something that's permitted by right, which would take away that option that you're concerned about.
So you, you, you say let's do a C U P and require those kinds of things as conditions of it?
Uh, if you, if you require a C U P, you're sort of a blank slate. The, the staff. Uh, the staff has to look at it and make a determination and, and each C U P is different. Um, it might be, you know, it might be walk-ins, it might be whatever. I mean, you, you could tailor it however you want to do it. Right, staff? Or not?
But case by case, correct, Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think that it's obvious you need a C U P. Um, we're dealing with a licensed industry. Uh, and it's no different than. Say a vet uh or the pot store. Um. What we have to be careful of is that we follow up on it. Uh, I believe that we need a C U P. Because they, if they're, they're out of licensing requirements, we've got a problem. Uh, if, if. And we can set, and this is one question I have of staff is. We're going from seven and a half spaces for people who do hair to two spaces. Um, now. Don't we have to count the employees i- i- as a space? If you have two tattoo artists, don't you need to count the employees? We're going down in everything else we do.
I believe Mr. Martinez told us six spaces.
It's six spaces. So it's uh, three spaces for each of the service chairs. In this case.
That was, that was, that, as I understand it, that was for the barbers, the, the hairdressers.
That would have been seven and a half for them.
Uh, uh, this is for a, for, for a situation where it is granted as a, as a of right use. If you have a C U P, you can require them to put in thirty parking places. You can require whatever you want them to do in terms of, of limited, so we don't. Uh, the number of parking spaces comes up in the, in the context of the C U P, not now. Not, not in the context of this determination.
Okay, so this says six parking spaces, okay.
You ever listen?
Um, now the one thing I'm concerned about is this isn't really a tattoo parlor. It, it's, it's a super exclusive artist tattoo parlor. Uh, and they're saying they do one customer per day. I guess, I assume that's per artist. Um. So we're reducing the parking requirements because we only have two artists. It's going down from being a hair salon from seven and a half to six for some reason.
Um. That should be music to yours, Vice Chair Mazza.
Well, I always like parking, you know, when we eliminate parking, we screw the city, okay? I don't care what anybody says, you're screwing people. Try to park downtown on a Saturday, okay? Try it. I tried it Friday or Saturday. So I think we, we need to decide. It's a C U P and it's specific. Because in this specific case, we're requiring six spaces. Uh.
No, we're not requiring anything. That, all we're just doing is making a determination of whether this is a use that is similar. To or not more offensive than the other uses that are listed in the um. Uh, in, in the zone.
And when I read this staff report, it tells me that as a barber shop, it's seven and a half. As this particular tattoo parlor is six. Okay, we are determining a requirement for spaces for tattoo parlors.
John, listen to me. I'm gonna tell you one more time. If a C U P is required, the number of parking places will be determined at the C U P hearing.
And are we going to require a C U P hearing?
You just said that you require, you, you thought it was obvious that we needed a C U P hearing. I agree with you.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Because this is.
And, and, and because.
Let me finish, please.
Sorry.
Because this is so unique, it's not a normal tattoo parlor, we're telling them. Essentially what they're asking for is one client per day. How many businesses do you know that have that? We have two particular artists who have uh, uh, customers coming from Borneo or whoever knows where. They're not the local yokels. So it's going to be a unique situation. Even if other tattoo parlors come to town. I doubt if another tattoo parlor comes to town that only has one customer per day. Okay, so we need a C U P to be specific about how these things happen. So I think all we need to do is decide what those C U Ps should require. And, and they, I think, and I'm just rolling out suggestions and I like other ones too. If, if there's a consensus, we need a C U P is. We, we have to have some way to transfer this business. And review the C U P because they could sell it tomorrow morning for somebody who has eight bikers giving tattoos. Okay, once they've got the permit, they got the permit. So we need a review system like we have at the pot shops or theoretically we have. Where one requirement would be, you need, you need to make sure, you need to turn in your county license. Once a year, whatever you do. Uh, I don't know when, you know, what the license period is. Another, that, that you have a maximum of two artists and two customers. Uh, things like that. So when it goes to be, you can't just transfer the C U P to a totally different business. And a regular tattoo shop is a totally different business than this. This is.
I, 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 these guys, this isn't like anything I've ever seen. So.
My point.
But the, the thing is, is they, they've told us.
Goodness, when was the last time you got a tattoo?
They, they've told us what they're gonna do and they're, they're as clean as, look at the workmanship here. These people, these people are really special. They're not gonna transfer anything.
What is your point? They shouldn't have a C U P?
No, they should have one, that's fine, but we don't have to dictate anything to them right now.
Guys, let's just let artists be artists.
No, you want to require a C D P, that's fine.
C U P.
Let's just make a machine, or make a motion. We're gonna allow this use in this. We're gonna require the tattoo parlor to get a C U P.
Okay, and, and do we want to have any guidelines for a C U P? For example, a pot shop.
No, we don't want guidelines. You make it up when you have a C U P hearing.
Yep.
Yes. Well, my question of staff right now is if you let me talk, are we going to? Grant a C U P or is that a separate hearing?
Yes, finally.
That is a separate hearing.
Okay, so we need to determine we're going to have a C U P. At that point, do we have any minimum requirements? We have minimum requirements in a lot of C U Ps. For example, you can't have a bar next to a school or blah, blah, blah.
But not tonight.
That's my question. Apparently these other cities do.
You're gonna run these guys out of town. They're, they're.
No, I'm not gonna run them out of town.
They're gonna go to Oxnard.
They ask for a certain specific thing. I'm wondering if, when you set up a C U P, you do not say. Well, you can have a, a liquor store. Uh. You know, you know. You know, you know, this, that, and that, then you don't have any requirements. Can you have a liquor store next door? In other words, these other cities have basic requirements for a CUP.
And when we get to that, then then we'll talk about it. So you you.
Well, you, I want to ask staff, Richard. Do we decide anything tonight about the requirements for a CUP other than you have to have one?
Pat, correct me if I misspeak here, but no, tonight uh the commission's task would be to direct staff on the processing. Whether it's a permitted by right, similar to a permitted by right use, or if a CUP is required. Yeah, if should the commission decide that a CUP is required, staff will collect information uh on the operation. Uh present to you of. Basically, how they propose to operate their business and also a description of the surrounding uh character. And whether, as we go through that analysis, if we identify any uh. Good or bad fits, I I think would be a fair way to say it, and present to you uh. If applicable, what some other cities have done for the consideration. But the key is you'd have. A a business plan in front of you.
Okay, and it will come to us.
And 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 it's in seventeen point six six zero. Yeah, that's the chapter on conditional use permits. Now, some other jurisdictions, and I I can't say this authoritatively, may have specific. CUP conditions for tattoo parlors. We do not have that in our municipal code. We do not have a dedicated specific section on tattoo parlors. That doesn't mean there are no. Findings that have to be made, rather just the kind of standard ti- ti- typical CUP conditions. As Director Malika said about, you know, place and fit would be analyzed. And so before you tonight is, as he said, it's either a finding of similar use to that beauty and salon shop, which is permitted by right. Or in this instance, we we would say it's it it's more similar to that of a veterinary clinic, which is a conditionally permitted use CUP in this current zone.
Okay, question. When you say we pass this tonight and we say, okay, this is a permitted use with a CUP. Then staff comes back with a CUP application for this particular business. Correct?
All right, w- w- once again, this, but this business, there there's nothing that, once that determination is made. These people, we we cannot force them to apply with this exact business. If they wanted to come back and say, we're gonna change it up a little bit, we want something different. I have no reason to believe that. I'm not saying that that's the case. I assume they're gonna, they're gonna get this and say, hey, we're great. We can't wait to to set up shop in Malibu. But I want to be clear that when we find a tattoo parlor is a similar use to a veterinary clinic. That means it's a conditionally permitted use in that zone and therefore in if if following from this. You 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 may get another application from an entirely different tattoo parlor that says, hey.
My question, that's my question. We can customize them to the business, correct? We're not setting, we're not saying every tattoo parlor. Uh has one customer per day. Or every tattoo parlor has X. X parking requirements.
Right.
And this is customized to this particular use.
For this CUP, but no, I I there there is some precedential value here. You you are correct that. Once this planning commission says a tattoo parlor use is similar to that of a veterinary clinic. If a subsequent tattoo parlor were to show up, we we it would be very difficult, and once again, I'm speaking in hypotheticals here, to say, no, 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 you are not permitted. You are not like that. They would still have to go through the CUP process. So as you said, if it's not twelve chairs and it's next to a school and there's all kinds of issues. They 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 wouldn't, they wouldn't get anything by right. But but yes, a a finding that a tattoo parlor is similar to a veterinary clinic does have some precedential value.
Okay, I understand that. Now. Once you issue a CUP on a property. Uh. It's my understanding they're transferring. And. How do you handle a very unique business? It's different than as far as I know, different than any other tattoo parlor in the world. How do you keep that from being transferred to a totally different type? Of tattoo parlor?
Be limited during the conditional use permit and make sure that that any other business would adhere to those guidelines.
Sure, Pete is is exactly right. It's built into the conditions. So if the condition is that there can only be two chairs and the parking spaces are X. We we, you know, once again, I I I will speak somewhat uh of an opinion. Yes, that artwork was beautiful. I saw that. I said, that's very, very impressive. We cannot say, though, you have to be that good of an artist. So if.
Well, I understand that, but can can we say? In your eleven hundred square feet, you get two artists and they get one customer a day. And then another tattoo parlor comes along and says, I want to have. Ten guys take walk-ins uh and.
That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about these guys and we're just.
Oh, no, that's my question. That is the question I'd like staff to answer. Are we talking about these guys or any tattoo parlor?
These guys.
Okay, so we can customize. Once we say.
At the hearing.
At the hearing.
Tonight.
They sell that tattoo parlor to somebody else. There's, it's my understanding they would be can under the same CUP. One customer per day, blah, blah, blah.
If. I mean, so the 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 the. The one customer per day. Well, once again, this is where we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves because this will be another hearing when it comes back. We can, I think, I think it would be fine to limit the, as I said, if we have parking spaces, number of chairs. The the number of customers per day, I I'm not really sure what the, there always has to be a nexus in terms of, hey, what is the concern we have? And and does this, is this, is this condition appropriately a nexus to it?
I'm not being clear. My point is. Once the CUP is determined for this particular business. Does the next tattoo parlor? Or the one this gets sold to? Can it have a separate requirement? If it doesn't follow the requirements on this one? Can we say the next guy's a walk-in?
No.
Say, we want to have fifty customers a day. Do we have to say, no, you can only have one? Or we can say you can have fifty, but you can, you gotta have X number of parking spaces.
Okay, okay, Vice Chair, you've had your point. Uh Commissioner.
I haven't had an answer. I don't have an answer.
You so.
You got your answers.
Chair Smith, I I think I get answered succinctly. Yes, Vice Chair Mazza, each. Unique tattoo parlor, such as future uh application are is treated on its own, its own merit. So no, we we are not. Limited by any CUP conditions. We may specifically apply to this one. What we are somewhat hemmed in by, not hemmed in, the precedential value is that. The tattoo parlor is a similar use to a veterinary clinic. That's the only precedential value it has. It has no precedential value on. Subsequent CUPs or anything like that. That's a future decision on a case by case basis.
Okay, and um. How about transferring? This particular CUP to a new owner? Does that stay, that CUP stay the way we passed it?
Yes.
Okay, so the new owner has to be similar to these guys.
Yes.
Now, is there another way? I don't see personally, and I'm just trying to make this simple. I don't see personally how this has anything to do with with dogs and cats, okay? Granted, they use needles, okay? How do you compare a tattoo parlor with a vet? Is there another broader use we can use as an excuse to have a CUP where we don't have to say, yeah, they're just like dogs and cats? I mean, it just seems like a strange.
Have to start bringing your dogs and cats in for tattoos.
Well, dogs and cats get tattoos, but uh whatever. Um. I'm just trying to get this straight. Uh.
But it doesn't matter right now.
Well, it would because.
It would later, but not now. So some, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep talking because.
I have a question.
My point is. It matters. When we say you can have a CUP because you're just like a vet hospital, is that the best choice? Okay, is that what we should use as their excuse? Because they have to. At some point, somebody's got to come in and say, I'm like a vet hospital. You know, uh is there another? Thing under the CN zone? That makes it easier. To deal with because it's similar. I don't see the similarity.
The needles.
You could also reference a beauty parlor. You could say that's beauty parlor. You could, I mean, we could put whatever you whatever you want on it.
No, 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 but we can't because because beauty shops and beauty salons are by right. Right, there would be no CUP process and and I I must, I take a little bit. So, yeah, there's no. We cannot use anything to make an excuse to make them get a CUP. If the if the will of this commission is. That we get similar to that hospital. That's fine. That is your prerogative. But that is, staff reviewed the 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 use table. This is what's been put before you in terms of the various uses. Of what we think is somewhat in the ballpark and we have laid it all out for you.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that.
Wait, wait, question. If if we vote for CUP, when this comes back to us, it can we rely that staff is gonna put together a list of recommenda- re- recommended conditions and so forth? The additional restrictions, the no walk-ins, what like? Or are we gonna be asked to come up with all of that ourselves?
I think I think the applicant gave us all that. This should be really easy. There's nothing to do.
Staff. Staff routinely. What what they gave us was a description of what they want to do. It's not necessarily. What staff would come up with. Staff's job would be to come up with negative consequences or possible things that that might be a problem. And it's staff's job to bring those to us as suggestions for limitations we want to put on as a CUP, just as they have done every time a CUP comes in front of us.
Yes, good. Thank you. That's that's.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we allow in the CN zone. Tattoo parlors with a CUP in the LIP table.
Uh that's, hang on, that that's not, so the 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 motion would would need to be that. If planning commission finds this as a similar use.
Yeah.
Or not not more objectionable than a veterinary hospital and thus it is a conditionally permitted use in the aforementioned zone.
Right, we're not amending the municipal.
You're right. That's that's your motion, right, John?
Well, I uh my only question is. Do we don't, we do not list it as an as a allowed use in the LIP?
No. Tattoo parlors, no.
What?
No, tattoo parlors, we do not. I believe, I believe it's silent, correct, Director Malika?
Yes, it is correct.
And we don't need to make it non-silent. We just.
This is, this this similar similar use determination is exactly why that 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 it's in here, that we can bring this topic like this to you all and you all can. At say one, you know, put you you say thumbs up or thumbs down based off of the various proposed uses that staff has provided.
Okay, so that's my motion.
What Patrick's, what Patrick said is your motion, right?
Yeah, that we amend the MMC to order to make.
Uh, no, no, that's, that that is, that 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 was not, that's not staff's recommendation, nor is that what's before you tonight. What what I'm hearing is that the motion is that we find that the tattoo parlor use is a similar use to a veterinary hospital and we can just leave it at that.
Okay, always in the past, like Tesla. Richard determined that and we endorsed it. But in this case, word determining, correct?
Right, I I believe Director Malika, that that was your discretion, that this was somewhat of a of a new, of a new item. So we figured we would, we would bring it to the. Planning Commission first. There's not a hard and fast rule. You're right, Director Malika could have made it himself.
I think that the applicant has their hand raised as well.
Yeah, they, she's she's had it up. I think we need to get this motion out. So Vice Chair, you agree with what Mr. Donegan said?
Yeah.
For Vaden? Please?
In that case, I'll I'll second the motion.
Great. Rebecca?
This is a point of clarification. Um. Patrick, could you clarify, were you saying? Tattoo parlors or the staff recommendation was a private tattoo studio use is similar to?
Excuse me, Rebecca, you did that as an astute point, yes, that the private tattoo studio as proposed is a similar use. And is not more objectionable than a than a veterinary hospital.
Thank you.
Uh, let me just ask one last question to clarify that. When you say as proposed, we're not even considering that, right? So it should be a private.
Two studio, got it.
Without as proposed.
Yeah, understood.
Okay. That's my motion.
Hey, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Um. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Unanimity.
Okay, I want to make a motion. Um. It's after ten thirty. I would like to continue the unheard item to a a full. Um hearing. Not, uh what do you call it, non-scheduled or scheduled, but not.
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
Special meeting, special meeting. Because uh this, and my reason for that is. It's after ten thirty. This is the biggest change in the zoning of Malibu and the history of Malibu. And. We would be very remiss to try to bang this out at ten thirty at night. Um.
No, you you guys, you, no, your mission was accomplished tonight. So there you go.
Well, I I was, there's no mission here. I want to do it right. Uh. You know, and and there's no reason we shouldn't do it right.
Yeah, I want to, I want to dig into it and I'm I'm fading here. So, but the soonest possible and can it? Including a possible scheduled meeting date already. How how do I how do I uh make an amendment to John's motion?
We have to ask staff.
Yeah.
So, Richard, it appears unless, and the technical staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears that next week Tuesday would be open.
Pat, would we have a noticing issue?
I don't believe so. So i- is the idea being continued, basically adjourn this meeting to a date certain.
A date certain.
Yeah, so that 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 would be fine. And 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 Rebecca, what what date did you say that was?
Um, I'm I'm seeing on the calendar, it appears as though we could meet on March fourteenth, which is a Tuesday of next week and um. Technical staff, Alex and or Parker, if one of you could tell me if I am correct, that there's nothing. That is not viewable by me that is booked for that time slot.
Uh this, you're talking the.
Tuesday, March fourteenth.
So a week from tomorrow, correct Rebecca?
Yes, eight days from today.
Do we start at eight a, should we start at eight AM to uh allow? Because my my own view is that. That. If you. This proposed amendment makes zero changes to what we already do. I'll be happy to, happy to talk to you offline about, to either one of you about that.
Well, it it changes every. Makes every permit not come to us and that's.
We're we're, we are, we are, we are continuing this item. This item is being continued, but we can have this discussion then.
I'd like to amend that continuation and I think Jeff has a good point, though.
Five thirty?
I'd like to have it earlier because the public, this is gonna be a long meeting and the public's interested.
And our technical staff have confirmed that the that time slot is available.
Five thirty or six thirty?
Um, I will, I had asked them about six thirty. Um, is there any objection to five thirty, Alex and Parker?
No, it's fine.
Thank you.
I I wonder, just to double check, do we have any really heavy duty things scheduled for the following twentieth that this?
We do actually have uh the TUP ordinance coming before you at that meeting.
Um. Yeah, I don't want to start at five thirty. I it's it's. Uh bad enough to face this on an empty stomach. I need to have dinner before I come to this meeting.
Six thirty is fine.
Let me ask you this.
It's not gonna take six hours, but it will.
No, 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 but Craig, my my question is TUPs. How much prep do you have to do on that if we start on Wednesday?
You already know where you are on this. So you've, according to you, you've got forty two thousand pages of stuff, so you should be ready to talk. There's nothing to get ready for.
Well, you have nothing to read. I I have to read the report before I vote on it and.
Gentlemen, 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 let's keep it, keep it just focused on the on the data continuum.
I'm just saying is is.
Six thirty, six thirty, March fourteenth. Let's go to work.
Okay, that's your motion, somebody?
Yes.
If not, I'll make it.
Six thirty, March fourteenth.
Okay.
Six thirty?
I'm sorry, is it? I'm sorry, it's a point of clarification. At this point, whose motion is this? Who is our first?
I don't know if I have a second. Uh, I was just asking a question between the motion. Are we? This is a question of Richard. Are we gonna have enough of the TUP material? In time to be able to do it? That week with this hearing for the next Monday? Are you gonna be on time with it? Because this one we got on Monday.
Yes, the TUP materials being published this week, I think with this one, if I'm not mistaken, it was available electronically. Either Thursday night or Friday, Friday, and then we.
It was published electronically on Friday, on that Friday that it's normally published, but because of weather conditions. The physical copy was not delivered to your home.
I just, I'm thinking the public, uh, uh, obviously it's gonna be that thick. I'm just wondering if. We have it in time. Can we get it a day early or something? So we have enough time to do both of them? We're gonna, you know, a bunch of, a bunch of stuff to go over in a eight day period.
The, the TUP hearing would be on the twentieth. Um, as normally scheduled, I don't have a report for that due to me until Wednesday.
We'll, we'll be publishing that report on Friday.
So we'll have a meeting on Tuesday and then the next Monday after that.
Yes.
Correct.
What makes it difficult for me is when there are a lot of different items, but you're, is it sounding like the twentieth might be not too many different things, right?
Um, let me bring that up. It's um. I have access to certain files on my workstation and not on the computers I'm using for the meeting. So let me see what I can see over here. Um.
Site visits.
And out, so let's see, there is one CDP tended to schedule for that meeting. And several DMWs and one time extension.
Doesn't sound too bad.
The DMWs are all, you know, onsite wastewater treatment systems.
Oh, Richard, any chance that gets bigger? I mean, because this is gonna be a big meeting, so. Is that schedule frozen? Are we gonna get more things added to it?
And we have passed the deadline for ten day noticing. So at this point, anything that would be added would be a consent calendar item.
Yeah, we, no more public hearings uh because of, you know, try to keep it light, so you only have the two items.
Okay.
So do I have a second for Vice Chair Mazza's motion to continue the ADU? Hearing to a special planning commission meeting on March fourteenth.
At what time?
At six thirty and you have a second.
I second it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Thank God.
I'll take that as a yes. Chair Smith?
You bet.
Motion carries.
That was March fourteenth, correct?
March fourteenth at six thirty P M.
And they'll be.
That will be a Tuesday night.
We'll be able to get tattoos then?
You will not because that's booked out several years in advance.
Plus they have a CUP.
Our children will be grown by the time they go to that tattoo parlor.
There you go. Um, would anyone care to make a motion for adjournment?
Yes, I'll do that.
Do we vote on that?
We typically do. So Commissioner Jennings made that motion.
Second it.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Good night, everybody. Stay warm, yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Aloha.
Okay, that was fun.
Good evening, gentlemen.